The views and opinions in this program are not those of CISA 7 or Spectrum.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us. Welcome to the regular board meeting for the month of January. We opened up an open session at four o'clock before going into closed session a few different times. At that time, we took roll call. All seven board members were present. We are now also joined by Superintendent Steve Merly along with members of his team. We're also pleased to be joined tonight by two members of the Inner City Student Council, President Noah Becker from West High School and Ella Bonney from Southwest High School. Thank you, Noah and Ella, for joining us tonight. With that being said, we'll start with on the agenda, our Pledge of Allegiance. So Josh, if you could pull up the flag and just in that process. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Next, we have our mission statement. Normally check in with a board member to read this. Anybody have it in front of them that would like to volunteer to read our mission statement? All right, I've got her. You got her, Rhonda? All right, go ahead. Thank you.
We educate all students to be college, career, and community ready. And I lost it. I am sorry.
Inspired to succeed in our diverse world.
Thank you.
That's what teamwork's for.
It flew off my phone. Sorry.
No worries. No worries. Maybe we have two people read it every week. All right. And then finally, our collaborative commitments again. We have posted seven agreements that we had worked on in a board retreat several months ago now. Just try to guide our work as school board members in each of our meetings. So they are posted there for reference. All right, moving now into the open forum, we will start with our Inner City Student Council report. And so I'll hand it over to Noah and Ella.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think I'll just go through this one. At the district level, students are preparing for final exams. That occurs on the 12th, 14th, and 15th, so tomorrow, and it's a Thursday. Students have been signing up for courses for the 2122 school year. They started sign up a little while ago. Student athletes from across the district have been signing up, signing letters of intent to colleges. And winter athletics have resumed, and student athletes are competing safely in person as of now. At West High School, Giving Tree, which is a holiday gift giving program organized by our library staff at West, received donations to cover 100 bags that included household essentials as well as a gift for those who were receiving them, and they got them all up. Western and Council conducted the Christmas contest, including prizes for the categories of ornaments and decorations, cookie decorations, and ugly sweaters. Science Club hosted a newtonous such Christmas trivia contest with science questions of a wide variety of difficulties and different topics. And yeah, they were not easy questions. At East High School, they also connected a trivia contest with questions focused on Christmas movies. And Eastern Council hosted a food drive for the Eats for East pantry, which they've kept up and running about this whole situation. And finally, at East, the National Honor Society has set up a tutoring program for the students there that have needed it. At the John Dewey Academy of Learning, they have been working to put together a program called the Leader in Me, which focuses on helping students recognize their leadership abilities and individual strengths. Dana also started a slideshow before Monday meetings containing photographs of previous in-school learning. And movie theater Thursdays have become a weekly program for students to attend a Zoom presentation of a movie each week under the district's license to show movies. At Preble, Sting Cancer conducted the successful toy drive, in which over 250 toys were donated to children battling cancer. And Preble also conducted a impressive, if you can find the pictures if you look, cookie decorating contest. Southwest, their art club held their first photography contest, which also has some wonderful submissions, which you can find if you look on the website. And at Southwest, their forensics are starting up, and they're organizing in preparation for the end of the year competition. I think that it covers a lot of other schools, too. I probably should put that under district. And finally, at the N E W School of Innovation, they conducted an all-school virtual assembly with various activities and breakout rooms, and a chance for everyone to see each other at the same time. Thank you, Mr. President. This is my report.
Thanks so much, Noah. All right, we have one item under recognition. Steve, you want to take this one?
Certainly. So we are very, very fortunate that we have someone on our team who has been recognized at the state level. And so if you have access to the agenda, you'll see that Ingrid Parker-Hill, who is our district fan, one of our four district family engagement coordinators, has been named one of the most influential Black leaders in Wisconsin. And this happened right before the end of our calendar year. The announcement came out of Madison, and it's a small group. There's only 51 people in the entire state. And Ingrid is one of those. I know many of you have had direct engagement with her. You know the quality of her work. This is an incredibly well-deserved recognition on her part. As a district, we're just so fortunate to have her as part of our team. And I consider it an honor, not only for her, but a reflection of the district as a whole. And so I'd ask you to join me in congratulating Ingrid and thanking her for everything that she does for our students, our families, and our community.
Congratulations to Ingrid. Very, very, very proud. All right, next on our agenda is public forum. I believe we have 15 people registered for calls tonight. Josh will get that process started for us. Just as a reminder, those of you who are waiting for a call, you'll receive a number with an out-of-state area code because of our Zoom platform. When a person enters the meeting, I'll introduce them, have them introduce themselves, and give their address, and then they'll each have five minutes to address the board. Josh, I'll let you work your magic, and we'll go through these public comments.
Working on it.
If we run into any technical difficulties, or somebody doesn't answer, we may just bump them back one spot and retry during those calls.
I've got an accepted call. Okay, we're going to have to move on to number two. We'll come back. Here we go.
Hi, Marcia. Can you hear me? Are you there, Marcia?
Yes.
Okay, thanks for joining us. I appreciate you calling in. If you could start by introducing yourself and giving us your address, and then you'll have five minutes to address the board.
All right, thank you. This is Marcia Walls, 3032 Joy Lane, Green Bay, Wisconsin, 54311. I just want to start by saying that I have two kids at Preble High School, one in 10th grade and one a senior.
Marcia, are you still there? Oh, we lost her.
We'll call her right back.
Hey, Marcia, are you back?
Hello?
Hi, Marcia. Sorry about that. You don't have to reintroduce yourself. We'll start over.
Okay. I have two kids at Preble High School, one in 10th grade and one a senior. My 10th grader is doing pretty good with the virtual environment, and her grades have flipped slightly, but not much. My senior is an in-person learner. Hello?
Yep, we're here.
Okay.
Are you still there? We can still hear you.
Yeah, this is... I'm at a loss here. All right, I'm just going to start with my senior. My senior is an in-person learner. I think we can all agree that people are in, learn in different ways. She told me at the beginning of the year that she struggled with virtual, and she had to drop her two AP classes. She used to like school and all the activities and socialization that came with it. But with virtual, she has almost checked out. She was a solid AB student, and now we are struggling just to pass. This isn't working for her. I'm sure none of you have had a chance to go through the emails, but I sent you one at around five o'clock tonight with another COVID-19 tracker, the one pager put out by First Trust. The biggest item on there, in my opinion, is the death rate by age group. And I'll just go over the two that are relevant to what we're talking about. For kids ages five through 17, there is a 99.999% survival rate. For teachers and staff, meaning age groups 18 through 64, there is a 99.75% survival rate. At this point, it's beyond ridiculous that we are not back in school. And finally, I am going to send out an email after this phone call to everyone except for Rhonda and Andrew, only because they're up for election in a couple of months, that has a generic letter of resignation in it. For any of you that can't vote in favor of raising the gating criteria to 500 or more, opening their schools, and including all grades in a blended model, you should immediately resign. We need leadership, not cowards. And finally, if we remain in this virtual environment, the next meeting in town hall should be in-person, at a gym, so that we can be there and have some open discussion and tear everybody hiding behind screens and not getting anything done. We are the laughingstock of Wisconsin right now. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for calling, Marcia. Are you going back? Oh, number three. Melissa, can you hear me? Are you there, Melissa?
I am here.
All right. Thanks for calling tonight. We appreciate it. If you could start by introducing yourself and giving us your address, and then you have five minutes to address the board.
Sure. My name's Melissa Stitz. My address is 3487 Bay Helen's Drive. And I appreciate you taking the time and allowing me to call in this evening. I'm here once again as an engaged parent of a child at Preble High School and also a taxpayer to ask you, the board members, and superintendent, to be the voice of the community, the voice of all in the community, and the ownership of the school district. I don't think anyone would argue that this is by far the most disruptive issue our school district has faced in quite some time. The decision as to when to remove kids from school and when to bring them back should not lie in any one person's authority, and in my opinion, it shouldn't even lie in one board's authority. I'm asking you, the school board, to be the voice of the ownership of this district and to take control of the criteria and the decision to return to school. I encourage you to consider the results of the survey, which did show that the majority wished to return to school at a minimum, or at a minimum to have the option. And I would say, I'm certain there will be comments by the board members that will indicate, well, we also had emails of people that said that they had to vote for options for in-person. But with that response, I would say, everybody needs to compromise. Everybody needs to meet in the middle. And for an entire year, we've had people that have wanted face-to-face learning that have compromised and stuck with virtual because they've had to. Notre Dame began back today, and Howard Swamical School District will be shooting for full days every day for all grades beginning February 15th. Full days every day for all grades, February 15th. We are losing students out of our district due to the decisions that you were making, and it will take us a long time to build this back. The impact this virus is having in our community is not disputed. However, it's important to consider that this virus is not going away anytime soon, and keeping our schools closed has not had a positive impact on the community spread. It has had a detrimental impact on our students. We've gone from 6,000 failing grades to over 15,000 failing grades this year. And there is a path to safely return to our children and the staff and the teachers to school. There is substantial evidence to support it can be done, even in the time of increasing positive cases in the community. We need to continue to pay attention to the scientific data, but also consider people like Dr. Allen of Harvard, which I shared with each one of you. I was trying to be a resource. Jane County actually invited him to a Zoom of all the superintendent administrators. And he has a free website, too, to bring schools back to school. He's done significant studies even on safe busing. And perhaps this is something we need to continue to spread within the community, so that way everybody feels comfortable with the return to school. We keep hearing from all of you that were following the science, but I believe the truth is the local school districts early on probably agreed to cautiously return. And when our public experts started to release positive information of returning kids to school, other districts were agile and prepared. Meanwhile, Green Bay Public School is sending out their very first survey, which includes one question without an opportunity for parents to express any comments or express any additional question. We were not prepared, and we were late to the ballgame. So the question is, how do we catch up and where do we go from here? This is a question of risk mitigation, not risk avoidance. Risk avoidance is not achievable when you consider the risk that not being in school poses. So far, our gating criteria has been inconsistent and incomplete, and that was very evident the last school board meeting when Christina and Rhonda were proposing gating members, and no additional members had any clear feedback. We all want students and teachers to be safe, and we want all our children, including the 7th, 8th grade, 10th, 11th, and 12th, in school. I'm confident that with so many schools opening up around us, this can be achieved. I also want to thank you for opening up sports, but I want to mention that there were many kids left behind, culinary clubs. And I also want to give a shout out to teachers like Wes Burt, who requested face-to-face instruction. He took the initiative to apply for it, which we need more and more teachers to continue to do. In closing, I'm asking you that you, the school board, be the voice of ownership, take control and oversight of this critical decision. I'm asking you to throw out the gating and focus on spread within the schools, individually, similar to what the majority of our other schools have done. I'm asking that you move quickly and understand. It seems like until now, most of the planning and communication from the district has focused on if and when we get kids in school instead of how to do it safely. Full-time in-person learning can be done. Others are doing it. As we move forward, I ask the school board and Superintendent Merly, focus on transparency and trust. When your actions don't match your words, people question intent. There have been small group meetings in which parents have offered ideas and asked, what do you need to open? Every time, the response is, we have enough PPE. I don't know about all of you, but I'm tired of hearing Green Bay is left behind. I'm tired of hearing Representative John Mako reference the need for us to figure it out. I'm tired of reading stories about families struggling with virtual and busing, and buses passing our house meanwhile, our kids at home. And I'm tired of students leaving our district. I do know that a teacher's survey has gone out with instruction in which they were expected to respond by January 8th. I'm hoping that as a district, we move forward quickly, safely, as we've had 10 months to prepare, and that we open schools for all kids as soon as possible. We need to change our gating, and we need to open for all students, including 7th, 8th, 10th, 11th, and 12th, as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Sorry about that, Melissa. I didn't mean for that to be so loud. Thank you for calling in.
Yep, thank you.
I'll get my timer figured out here. Sarah, are you there?
Yes, I am.
Thank you so much for calling in. Sorry about the mishap at the beginning. If you could start by introducing yourself and giving us your address, and then you'll have five minutes to address the board.
Okay, I'm Sarah. I live on Lincoln Street. I'm not really sure what good this is going to do because we've had this round and round talk for a while now. But again, I'm going to voice that we really need the kids to get back to school. Obviously, every other district is making it happen, and I know you argue that we're a bigger district than the ones surrounding us. But even Chicago called you guys out, that you guys really need to get your act together and get this going, make a plan, and get the kids back in school. Now, obviously, you guys have no intentions of going back this year. We know, we get it. I don't know exactly what we're doing here at this point, but I have to feel like I have to keep fighting for my kids. This morning, my kindergartner, now we're trying to move over to Zoom, because obviously, the plan is still that you guys have no intentions on going back to school. So we're moving over to Zoom, and I'm not very tech savvy. My kindergartner, obviously, I mean, it took us an hour to try to figure out how to switch, and the computer kept freezing and all this. You know what? Kindergartners should be working with their hands, cutting, doing fine motor skills, all that kind of stuff. But every day, all day long, he's sitting on a computer, not doing any of those activities. And for an hour, we had to just try to figure out even how to move on to Zoom. And it's like, you know what? No, they should be going to the classroom. We shouldn't have to keep on taking these steps backwards. Now, I work in an early childhood center, and I know you guys are going to say that school is nothing like an early childhood center in it. And obviously, school is bigger and everything. We still have 30 kids in a classroom. We are making it work. We still do circle time. The kids can still play next to each other like human beings, and they can go outside and play next to each other with masks off. And you know what? It's working just fine. It's been working this whole time. We need to move forward. And I just, I feel like you guys have really completely failed us. And I will be, at the end of the month, trying to transfer to a different district. I've just about had enough. I feel like we're falling on deaf ears, but I'm still here to fight for all the other children that maybe won't be able to transfer out. We might, I don't know what we're going to do, but we're going to have to figure it out to move districts because this is just not okay to keep on doing this this whole time. And you hear these parents say they want to go back. You said that you wouldn't have enough staff. So the survey came out and it said 60% would want to go back to school. So obviously, not 100%. So I'm thinking, unless I have it wrong, you would have enough staff to cover that 60% that at least want to go back to school, because not everybody wants to go back face-to-face. So why is it, why are we still stuck where we can't even get that? Why are we still stuck where it's just this one being on the screen, and that's it? There's nothing else. There's no other option when every other school district is making it work. And also, the $20,000 that you guys got donated for blue light blocking devices, where are they? I haven't seen them. I asked, and I called, and they're supposed to be blue light blocking glasses. I haven't seen any of them. I'm just wondering where that $20,000 is. And I'm wondering what good the buildings are that you bought, what are we using them for? What good are they doing if you have no intentions of opening the schools back up to the kids? So I do want those answers at this board meeting, if possible. And that's basically it. I just want to voice again how frustrated, and I just, I feel like I'm falling on deaf ears, but I feel like I still have to try to voice that this is just, you guys got to move forward. You got to make a plan, and you got to get the kids back in school. It's not, it's really, we got to move forward. This virus is always going to be around. You got to take the steps and move forward. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you for calling in, Sarah. If you're listening at home, I know you just hung up. We can't address your questions right now. They may come up later on in the agenda. And if not, we'll follow up with you tomorrow.
Eric, can you actually explain to her why we cannot address her questions?
Yeah, because we're not specifically posted on the agenda for speaking. Some of them, we might, and they may come up later, but at this point, it's not on the agenda, and we're only allowed to speak to things that are posted on the agenda. So just want to make sure that I clarified that, but we will. They may come up later in the meeting, and we can definitely try to respond tomorrow. Sarah, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
All right. If you could, start by introducing yourself. First, thank you for calling in. Introduce yourself, giving us your address, and then you'll have five minutes to address the board.
Certainly. My name is Sarah Cruz. I live at 718 East Briar Lane in Alockway, Wisconsin. And thank you for taking my call. I am a GBA PS parent to four high school students. I have two freshmen and one senior who attends Southwest High School, and one sophomore who attends John Dewey. Like so many in the district, my kids are very eager to get back to in-person learning. So when the district decided to allow science labs and tech ed-based shop classes, lab time, to start up in person, once a teacher files a face-to-face learning application, we were thrilled. While personally, we are having a very good experience with online learning, there are certainly some in-learning, in-person learning components of science and tech ed-based courses that are very hard, if not impossible, to replicate at home. Our excitement has turned into frustration, though, as we see students at different high schools enrolled in the very same courses as my own kids return in person to their high schools for lab and shop time, while we at Southwest have had none. Recently, I saw the absolutely gorgeous metal toolboxes made by the Metals One students at Preble High School on the Green Bay Public School Facebook page. They were amazing, and they are certainly something to showcase during our virtual learning time. And it's definitely, they were just definitely excellence in action. So my son, Keenan, is in Metals One at Southwest, so the exact same class, different school. And by contrast, the only project Keenan's class has done has been making a car out of two pop cans. He was instructed to use a kitchen shears and do it, quote unquote, "over the kitchen sink" for safety. Unfortunately, I don't have a picture of it to share, but rest assured, it looks exactly like what you would think a car made out of two hot-glued pop cans would look like. My senior son is in a number of AP and dual-credit science classes. We have been told by several college recruiters that even if a student were to receive a five on the AP exam, if there is not some in-person science lab time, the student will not be given college credit at their institution, and they will be required to retake that class in college. This is a huge loss of both time and money for these Southwest seniors, a loss that some of their fellow students across the river will not have to bear. My emails to Southwest science teachers and the principal at Southwest asking of face-to-face applications for these lab times have been filed are still unanswered to this day. I am writing to ask the board to require equity across the Green Bay school collodrons. All shops and labs should be available at every school, and not just the ones where the teachers or administration wants to do so. I am a school secretary at a Green Bay elementary public school. I am not, if I am not in the main office, it is my responsibility and our school's responsibility to put someone in the main office to cover me. This should be the same with every single position in Green Bay, especially the teachers. If we have a teacher who is unwilling to teach the lab portion or the shop portion of their class, then it should be
then it should be the district's responsibility to provide a teacher who is willing to cover that portion of the class so that all students from all high schools are taught equal curricula. As a district, we are required to provide an equitable education for all of our students, not just the ones who are lucky enough to tend to schools that have teachers willing to teach these labs and shop times. Please, I ask that as a board, you take the steps necessary to allow this inequity to be swiftly corrected. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Thank you very much for calling, Sarah. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Have a good night.
You too as well. Heidi, are you there? Heidi, can you hear me?
Hello, yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Yep, thanks for calling. We really appreciate it. If you could introduce yourself and give us your address, and then you'd have five minutes to address the board.
Sure, thank you. My name is Heidi Pead, and I am at 1611 Royal Crown Court, 54313. And I actually recorded my, my statement here tonight just because I wanted to make sure I stayed within the five-minute timeline. So here goes.
Good evening. I would like to take my five minutes of time tonight and address Steve Merly directly. Steve, are you satisfied with how you've handled things so far in your new position here in Green Bay? Do you, in good conscience, feel you have been working towards fulfilling the mission statement of having our kids college, career, and community ready? Have you unfairly given more weight to the teachers' union in making the decision to stay virtual? Personally, you have made a terrible first impression on me. You have not been transparent, forthcoming, honest, and intentional. There were board members that had good concern to vote against your hiring and question if you were the right person for the job. As of now, it appears you may not be. And this will be your legacy, forever associated with the poor handling of the Green Bay school system throughout this pandemic, failing thousands of students, and simply just being unable to figure it out, as Representative John Mockel recently stated. I believe regaining the trust and confidence of hundreds of Green Bay families and students will be very difficult. Now, I'd like to touch on a few areas where you have not fulfilled your job duties. I have your job description in front of me and want to highlight a few areas where you are falling short under each standard. Standard one, strategic leadership and district culture. You have not promoted an academic rigor for students or empowered them to reach a high level of performance. You've done the opposite. You've lowered the graduation requirements and revised grading policies to compensate for the failures of virtual learning. You've decreased instructional time by 20% this year by going to a four-day school week. Standard two, policy and governance. You have not adjusted local policy to state and federal standards. It is well-known and common knowledge by now that in-person school is recommended and doable with provisions in place. You have also been given financial resources to assist with this. All of our surrounding schools have acted. You sit idle. You have chosen to go against state and federal recommendations. You make your own rules and write your own playbook. Standard three, communications and community relations. You have not responded to community feedback, demonstrated consensus building and conflict mediation, or strengthened community support. You have been slow to respond to emails. Your responses have been generalized and vague. You haven't been sincere in your engagement with those that want in-person learning, and you've created mistrust and division. Standard four, leadership and organizational management and school finance. You have not established operational plans and processes that reflect an understanding of school finance. Whereas most other industries have made changes, cutbacks, or implemented other strategies to contain costs and stay afloat, you are asking for more money and at a time where the vast majority of your customers are getting less of a product. Not good business sense. Standard five, curriculum planning and development. You have not developed a delivery system and created appropriate instructional practices for all students. Virtual learning doesn't work for all and is not a long-term solution. Standard six, instructional management. Very similar to standard five. You have not changed processes to improve student learning and climates for learning, nor have you demonstrated an understanding of the development of the total student, including their physical, social, emotional, and cognitive needs. Again, virtual learning doesn't work for all. Standard seven, staff evaluations and personnel management. You have not demonstrated executive leadership by applying effective processes for staff performance. There have been numerous concerns about decreased instructional time, teachers not present at class time, teachers distracted by their own children at home, and lack of engagement. Where is the accountability? Standard eight, values and ethics of leadership. You have not known and described the role of education in a democratic society. You have been on one side of this issue from day one. You have not met in the middle and listened to the majority. As a superintendent, you are charged with and paid to make tough decisions and decisions that won't please everyone. You need to meet the needs of most, serve your customer, and compromise, not be swayed by political agendas. Steve, you are failing our community, and we deserve better. Thank you.
That's it. Thank you.
Barbara, are you there?
Hello, I am here.
Hi, thank you so much for calling tonight. We appreciate it. If you could start by introducing yourself and giving your address, and then you have five minutes to speak to the board.
Barbara Coniff, 2651 Seneca Court, Green Bay, Wisconsin, 54313. I have a call to action for you, and I have a plan. I suggest that gating criteria based on the COVID-19 prevalence in the community are irrelevant because surrounding schools, businesses, services, retail, and hospitality industries are all operating to serve their customers as customers desire where they desire to be served by making change to mitigate COVID-19 risk. This is change that requires options. The Green Bay area public schools can have these options, too. I've created an outline of a plan to make this happen. Board members and superintendent, you have the seven-page document in your email inboxes. This plan is based on key elements identified by the American Academy of Pediatrics that states this overarching goal. The AAP strongly advocates that all policy considerations for school COVID-19 plans should start with a goal of having students physically present in school. This changes the question from, when is it safe to reopen school? To, how do we make it possible to provide in-person school during the COVID-19 pandemic? Parents want options of virtual or classroom learning. Teachers want workplace choice for virtual or in-person learning. Here are the key elements of my planned framework for serving the families and teachers as they wish to be served with regard to place of learning. Implement a dual learning model that provides simultaneous in-person and virtual instruction based on family choice, subject to symptom, quarantine, and exposure guidelines. Having options for staff and students to teach and learn virtually and in person offers the in-school choice that 60% of parents want, gives teachers who want to be in class and can teach class effectively via virtual the ability to either choose virtual or in-class, provides the virtual setting for families who want that option, and the flexibility to move between platforms as people experience COVID symptoms or need to quarantine due to exposure or other considerations. Second, eat the elephant one toenail at a time rather than focusing on swallowing the whole. Bring each school up on the model as soon as readiness permits. We are in an education crisis here in Green Bay, and no school population should wait for other school populations to be ready if that school is ready. Have an implementation readiness dashboard on each school's website so parents and staff are informed of progress. Other areas of school COVID-19 mitigation action areas include environmental concerns and changes, scheduling of classes, technology to support the simultaneous dual instruction model, symptom screening processes, building entry and flow, contact tracing, quarantine, and staffing management, cleaning and disinfection, and ventilation. I'm not suggesting I have all the answers, but I have started to ask the questions and brought forth proposals. It's time to stop talking about why we can't go to school and instead start asking, how can we? I work full-time, but I'm happy to open additional hours in my day to volunteer my education, professional training, and experience to serve you and the community by working with you on answering this call to action. I await hearing from you. Let's get going. Thank you.
Thank you for calling, Barbara. We appreciate it. Hi, Jennifer, can you hear me?
I can. How are you?
Good. How are you?
Good. I'm doing okay.
All right. Thanks for calling. You know the routine. If you could introduce yourself, give us your address, and then I'll start the five-minute timer.
You're right. I do know the routine. Are you sick of me yet? I'm Jennifer Sajinski. I live at 2645 Seneca Court, Green Bay, Wisconsin. Thank you very much for your time this evening, Superintendent Merly and the Green Bay Public School Board. As a student, as a parent of two high school students who attend Green Bay Southwest and a teacher who has been teaching face-to-face in a neighboring school district since September without having to quarantine, I might add, I implore you to do right by all of our students and do your job. Our district's mission is to prepare all students to be career, college, and community-ready and inspired to succeed in our diverse world by promoting engagement, equity, and excellence. If I were your teacher or supervisor assessing you on your knowledge, performance, and skills in these areas, you would flat-out have earned an F or would have been fired for your lack of progress and failure to meet your own standards over the past 10 months. And it's not personal. I hate saying that. I'm sure you guys are all great, wonderful people, but you haven't done your job. You have had since March and have been provided millions of dollars to figure out a safe and sustainable way to provide access to equitable and excellent educational opportunities as other districts have provided to their students. You should have been planning all along to have our students in person, not keep them stuck at home behind the screen. It is shocking and unacceptable that Green Bay has continued to stay closed in the name of safety while every other district in a three-county radius to ours has been able to safely and sustainably provide at least some form of in-person instruction to any student who would prefer or benefit from it. Families deserve access to educational delivery models that their children thrive from, not merely survive from, or in many cases, fail or disengage from. And your own data proves the inefficacy of this one-size-fits-all, virtual-only model. Those who are thriving in virtual and who are risk averse should still be offered the opportunity to stay in that model. However, it is time for the district to open up for those who are not thriving and/or those who are risk tolerant and prefer or learn more effectively while in person. There are many medical professionals residing and practicing in our community who advocate for schools to be open. Please explain to me how our board and educational administration thinks they know better than medical health practitioners about what is best for community health. I'm pretty sure you didn't go to school to be trained in that. I know I didn't. I, I follow the scientists. Carolyn Stanford Taylor, our state educational superintendent, sent out a letter to all Wisconsin educators today. A direct quote from the letter reads, "I am immensely proud of your efforts to build relationships with students and their families, and I am impressed with the lengths you have gone to effectively educate and ensure their individual needs are being met." Unfortunately, Ms. Stanford Taylor, her quote does not apply to the Green Bay Area Public School Board and administration's leadership at this time. I'm hoping there's a yet in there, growth mindset, right? Because you are promoting a one-size-fits-all approach, approach instead of providing what is best for each learner and their family. My request is a taxpaying citizen and a parent of students who deserve better. Number one, quit leaving our students behind by offering them less than other districts are offering right now. Two, get rid of the nonsensical, arbitrary, never attainable gating criteria and follow recommendations by medical providers who say it can be done safely and sustainably. Number three, open our schools for those who desire or require in-person instruction while keeping virtual options for others. And number four, provide the excellent, engaging, and equitable education you so say is your mission for all. That is why I chose for my children to come back to this district. Please quit disappointing me. Yours in education, and I do respect the work you've been trying to do, but you gotta do better. Thank you.
Thanks, Jennifer.
Options for others, and number four, provide the excellent.
Can you hear me, Brooke?
I can.
Okay. Just make, I think you just turned it down, but just making sure the volume on your computer is, is down behind you so you don't get an echo. Thank you for calling. If you could start by introducing yourself, giving your address, and then you have five minutes to speak to the board.
Uh, thank you. Brooke Andrews, 3150 Outing Court, Green Bay. For what it's worth, at the halfway point in the academic year, I resigned myself to the fact that this administration and this board seem determined to continue to keep kids out of the school. We've brought up the fact that there were middle and high school students used to get 50 minutes of instruction each class period. They now get less than half of that in the virtual model. We've discussed the fact that our students used to get five days of instruction, and this year, they are in classes for four days per week. We've talked at length about the fact that getting less instruction per day and less instruction days per week equates to a significant shortfall in what our kids will have learned. These are reasonable conclusions based on the facts, and in practical application, this is being borne out. GBAPS is concluding that what I have to assume is the single least successful semester from an academic standpoint in its history. The amount of students failing is at an all-time high. Student morale is at an all-time low. Mental health has never been more in question. You've had to eliminate graduation requirements, and you've altered the grading criteria to save space. You've conducted a survey where the overwhelming majority, two to one, prefer in-person instruction. Despite all of this, you still can't get our kids in the classroom. If all of this hasn't clearly painted the picture that the objectives of this board and this superintendent do not align with their mission to educate all students to be college, career, and community-ready, inspired to succeed in our diverse world, then I don't know what does. What I'd like to talk about instead is the financial impacts down the road and the fallout related to this mismanagement. We already know that the administration has done little or nothing to decrease operational expenses this year. And we know that the $30 million budget increase for next year that Superintendent Merly proposed was approved by this board. What hasn't been explained to my satisfaction is where that funding is going to come from. We've been told time and again that GBAPS has more than 21,000 students. The results of your recent survey indicate that we have a little more than 19,000 students. I'm not dealing in absolutes here, but it's safe to say that at present, there are 1,000 less students in our district than we had last year. Have they gone to one of the 10 public school districts within 15 miles of Green Bay that is offering in-person instruction? At $8,000 a student, that's $8 million of our taxes that are going to other school districts. How will a decrease of this size affect the state funding our district receives? I can't imagine that we would receive the same amount of state aid as we have currently when our enrollment has taken such a drastic hit. Driving students and parents to leave to pursue academic opportunities you refuse to provide is going to have a crippling effect on our budgeting ability. The direct cost in subsidies to other districts and the corresponding The direct cost in subsidies to other districts and the corresponding substantial funding cuts due to losing 1,000 or more students, coupled with the more than 10% increase in our budget, is going to lead to pretty sizable shortfalls. Shortfalls that are likely to be addressed with increases in our property taxes. The students are paying the price right now, and they will likely be paying a price for continued virtual learning when competing for college placement and job opportunities following high school. And all of us taxpayers will quite literally be footing the bill for the ineptitude shown here and the unwillingness to provide the constituency what they want. The only thing I can take solace in is the fact that at the end of the day, my name is not the one that will be associated with this debacle, and my legacy won't be tarnished by my refusal to abide by the wishes of those I serve. Thank you.
Thank you for calling, Brooke. We appreciate it. Hi Leah, can you hear me?
Hi, this is Leah.
Hi Leah, thank you so much for calling tonight. If you could start by introducing yourself and giving us your address, and then you'll have five minutes to speak to the board.
Absolutely. My name is Leah Bergstrom, and I live at 2491 Crystal Springs Drive. Good evening. My family recently had the opportunity and privilege to tour some local schools who are open and educating children full-time in person. To see the implementation of safety measures firsthand and the ease at which the precautions were followed was eye-opening. These were schools that don't have as many resources as Green Bay, yet they were able to think outside the box and get things in place over the summer so they could open in fall. The administrators started our tour stating that their mission over the summer was to build a plan to successfully and safely educate the children in person for the entire school year. Their goal was to get kids in school safely and keep them there where they need to be, where the results are best, and where kids thrive, in a school. When faced with adversity, these schools didn't cower in fear, but rose to problem-solve the barriers. Wouldn't you agree that this is some great role modeling for our youth? It's a great life lesson this district is teaching. It's time to remove the gating criteria. Green Bay Public Schools continues to lead with obstinate and belligerent methods instead of with positive forward-thinking leadership. While the COVID-19 climate has evolved and changed the last 10 months, the Green Bay School District has done nothing to pivot and progress with the best interests of the students in mind. Our current status is not in the best interest of all the students. It's time to remove the gating criteria. Last spring, we had no choice but to close schools due to COVID-19. It was a safe and cautious action to take. In the last 10 months, we have gained much knowledge and are apprised of the mitigation and safety measures that work to stop the spread of COVID-19. Currently, there is no mandate, no ruling, and no legislation stating that schools need to remain virtual. To that point, Mr. Merly and his team should have been working tirelessly to present a safe plan to the board that includes a choice for return to school for the Green Bay Public School students. No such plan has been presented, and you've had 10 months. Instead, plans without equitable access have been presented. Plans for face-to-face waivers that are only being granted for a small subset of students. Plans where extracurriculars take precedence over academics. It's time to remove the gating criteria. Mr. Merly, please review the eight standards listed in your job description. After I studied the job description, it is evident that keeping children out of the school is not conducive to any of the eight standards you should be working to not only meet, but also surpass. It's time to remove the gating criteria. There are over 50,000 school-aged children in Brown County. 30,000 of those children have had face-to-face instruction at some point since September, and many will have more robust options this month. There is no reason that the students of Brown County, who unfortunately happen to reside within the Green Bay school boundaries, should have to be punished or shoulder the burden rate of COVID-19. There is no logic to this way of thinking. It is actually quite draconian. If New York City can figure out how to get their students back to school, there is no reason Green Bay can't do the same. Across the country, districts much larger than Green Bay have operationalized face-to-face learning to different extents. It's time to remove the gating criteria. I would like to present some questions to the board members in regards to the Green Bay families not being offered a choice for face-to-face learning. Are you losing sleep over the lack of options being given? Do you see your child's personality shrink each and every week? Do you notice their once-vibrant personality slowly slipping away? Do you observe firsthand that your children are losing motivation for schoolwork, losing motivation for engagement opportunities? Do you witness your children suffering from anxiety? Do you observe your children dealing with depression and social isolation issues? Do you watch them have way too much screen time each and every day in comparison to what is recommended for their age? If you don't, how are you staying relevant to the families who are struggling with these issues? How do you think it's okay to take away choice from these families who desperately need face-to-face learning? In your recent survey, 60% of students opted for a return to a blended model. Don't you find this telling? Don't you think these students deserve options? I find it alarming that 14% of Green Bay Public School students and their families are so disengaged that they didn't even respond to the survey. It's time to remove the gating criteria. Are these issues too much for you? Are you unable to empathize and represent all students? Is your focus more on community health than preparing Green Bay students for college, career, and community? Are you not interested in letting parents decide what is best for their children? Are the letters and stories just another tally on your Excel spreadsheet? For those of you who answer yes, I implore you to step down, as you are not fulfilling your role. Now more than ever, we need a robust board that is intentional with all that they do. For those of you who answered no, do the right thing and remove the gating criteria. Thank you.
Thanks for calling, Leah. Alicia, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you so much for calling tonight. We really appreciate it. If you could start by introducing yourself and giving us your address, and then you'll have five minutes to address the board.
Yes, this is Alicia Van Chatten. I live at 3396 Cottage Hill Drive, Green Bay, Wisconsin, 54311. Um, so I am just trying to emotionally recover from listening to these calls, as it is heartbreaking as a parent. So I'm gonna try to hold myself together because I feel like I'm gonna start crying, actually. So, sorry. I'm looking at your faces on the screen as you listen to me. Sorry. And I want you to explain to my child who has struggles, who has a fight before plans, who sees a behavior therapist, who takes medication, who we are doing everything we can to help her. I want you to tell me, what do I tell her? When her cousins, who she sees on a regular basis, go to school? Do I tell her that her school cares less about them? Do I tell her that their lives are less valuable? Do I tell her that they're genetically superior? Do I tell her that their leadership, the people that run her school, the people that are guiding her life, care more about her or care more about her cousins than they do about her? How is this okay? How do you each go to bed at night knowing the decisions you're making are affecting people like this? I just, I want to know, and I apologize for being emotional. But this is a federal, hard, hard 10 months. And yes, people have died in world wars, and yes, people have died in other tragic events. And I'm not saying that those lives aren't important. Of course they are. But I'm asking you, if every other school district can do this, why can't we? How do I explain that to my child? So when she's struggling in math and she doesn't know what to do, do I say it's too hard? You should just give up. You should just walk away. When my son, who has enrolled in DI for years, was told, if they, if they never say no, that means you can do it. So in DI, that means collaboration, think outside the box. How can we make this happen? I am heartbroken watching her struggle and not being able to help. I work full-time, and I am blessed to work from home. But I am not a teacher, and I am not able to do all of this. We need you. We need your help, your leadership, your guidance to move past your fears of the what-ifs. Embrace your fears, even if it's baby steps. Get these kids back in school. You are in a position to change lives, to make a difference, all of you. That's all I have to say. Be brave. Be the leaders we need you to be. Please step up. Thank you.
Thank you for calling, Alicia.
You're welcome.
Katie, can you hear me?
I can, yes.
Thank you so much for calling. If you want to start by introducing yourself and giving us your address, and then you have five minutes to speak to the board.
Okay. Hi, my name is Katie Hool. I live at 701 South Jackson Street, Green Bay, Wisconsin, 54301. Um, first of all, thank you for allowing me time to speak and for listening. Um, I want to start off and thank the board for caring for our students. I know it's more than you thought you signed on for, and that it's a thankless job. You've all dedicated so much time to making sure our students are taken care of. Um, regardless of the differing ideas you have on the best way to take care of our students, I want you to know that I appreciate each and every one of you. I have children in 4K at the Oak Learning Center and second grade at Leonardo da Vinci. Virtual school is going well for both my children. I'm thankful for their teachers, and I'm thankful for being part of the Green Bay School District. I've always been behind the decisions of the school board with virtual school. However, please hear me as I speak on a unique perspective, specifically with 4K. I feel it's time, we need to be creative to better serve our students. I'm here to advocate for 4K classes to begin an in-person offering now, and here's my reasoning. I feel 4K is the safest cohort to bring back in person initially. They're in school for only three hours per day. According to the Policy and Information Advisory 2017, number 44 from the state of Wisconsin, up to one-third of a child's day in 4K should be spent in student self-directed activities. What that means is allowing an opportunity to play and explore their classroom and their learning activity centers. My thought is this: let them play, explore, and do their learning activity centers outdoors. I'd like to see Green Bay schools take this opportunity for our four- and five-year-olds and create outdoor time. Outdoor time will minimize COVID risk. As I stated, their school day is three hours. This is a short amount of time for students to be in a classroom. And if our 4K teachers can incorporate 60 minutes outdoors, that leaves two hours of indoor time. With kids and teachers and aides masked, I think this is the lowest risk we can possibly have while serving our students who choose to be in person. Thank you for your time, and please consider this opportunity as a spot to start. Let's serve this age group because they have, they have a unique opportunity in such a small amount of time in school. Thank you.
Thank you for calling, Katie. Hi Stacy, can you hear me? Hi Stacy, can you hear me?
Hi, yes, I can.
All right. Thank you for calling. If you could, start by introducing yourself and giving us your address, and then you'll have five minutes to speak to the board.
Okay, thank you. My name is Stacy Orlikowski. I live at 543 Bellwich Road in Green Bay. I have debated many times about calling into this board meeting. I've called in the last time, along with many others, who are frustrated, fed up, and concerned parents, but the board seems intent on following their own agendas. My six-year-old son has been and continues to struggle with virtual school ever since it's been implemented almost a full year ago. It has gone from bad to worse. I have been fortunate enough to have a daycare that created a virtual program so that my son still has days where he has interaction with other kids his age. We, and we now also have hired a tutor for my son one day a week. However, virtual remains a constant struggle for him. As I explained last time, my son was diagnosed with ADHD combined type. He learns best hands-on and in the classroom, not sitting in front of a screen all day. He gets upset when he does not catch on and when he feels like he's just not getting it. This past week, we have hit our breaking point. On Friday, my son's tutor came over to help with his most difficult subject, which happens to be reading and writing. He sat with him for two hours, and things seemed to be going great. He left. My husband returned home from work and assisted him with his afternoon classes. He started to struggle with staying focused on class and being forced to continue to sit at the computer. He started to tell my husband, his daughter, I should just die, and I wouldn't have to go to school, or have to do school. How heart-wrenching it was to hear my six-year-old son say this. When I called and spoke, I called up his physician that he sees and spoke to the nurse. She comes in on how many more calls they've received because of school being virtual. She then asked me, when is Green Bay supposed to go back? I explained that there was no set date and that Green Bay has met, not met the gating criteria that was set. Her response was, oh my God, are you kidding me? Before this comment was made, I had tried to get my child into a counselor that had been, that he had seen before and helped him in the past, but I was told the appointments were booking out until August of 2021. She advised me to get a referral to hopefully get in sooner. I called again today after Friday's comment, and it is now October of 2021 to see her. We tried a different counselor, but I was told had more openings, and it is still the end of February before my son can see somebody after the comments that were made. Obviously, my son is not the only one struggling emotionally with what is going on. We are trying everything we can do to help him, but he learns best in the classroom. Why is it that the school board continues to ignore its parents' questions and requests for specific reasons on why Green Bay cannot open the schools? Many have attempted to reach out and get those questions answered, yet all we receive, if we are lucky, is a generic copied and pasted message from those on the board. I am so glad to hear people calling this out, such as Representative John Mako, who called out Green Bay schools specifically on his public summary on how Ashwadhan, East Pier, Howard, Plumco, Freedom have all figured out a safely bring back students and teachers, and I quote him, "Some way, Green Bay can't figure it out." You have now had 10 months to get a plan together. Figure it out. Superintendent Merly and other school members, you are failing our students. It's time to open the schools.
Thank you for calling, Stacy.
Thank you.
Hi Tracy, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Thank you very much for calling in tonight. If you could start by introducing yourself and giving us your address, you'd have five minutes to speak to the board.
Okay. My name's Tracy Pick, and my address is 2119 Plum Creek Road. Um, I'll give you a little bit of my background information initially here. I'm a family nurse practitioner. I've been in practice for 23 years. Um, I've worked in family practice. I've also had leading roles in student health through Morningside College and other college facilities. I've had 10 years' experience in occupational medicine as well. And the reason that I felt that I wanted to speak with the school board tonight is the fact that I've been following the school board and the protocol for your school systems and noting that the schools have not yet returned to in-person learning. Uh, currently, I have a strong passion for child adolescent and teen patient advocacy, and I'm trying to make sure that those who are voiceless actually have a voice, and that is leading me to make this call tonight. Unfortunately, I think sometimes healthcare professionals are hesitant to come forward and give their opinion in situations like this. So I felt it was really important for you to hear from someone with experience. I'm not blind to the serious nature of COVID-19. I manage the care of hundreds of COVID-19... I manage the care of hundreds of COVID-19 positive patients. I've had numerous patients who've spent extended time in the intensive care unit. I've lost patients to COVID-19. I'm very educated regarding the subject. But the reason that I called in is the fact that I've also seen more patients with depression and anxiety than I have ever seen at any other time in my twenty-three years of medical practice. My pre-teen and teen rate of depression and anxiety has increased most. It's doubled and most likely even tripled or quadrupled from the past several years when I've seen these children in the clinic. I know that the determination to not go face-to-face in your school district is allegedly based on science. But science is ever-changing. And currently, the American Academy of Pediatrics is pushing for students to be physically present in classrooms rather than to continue in remote learning for the sake of their well-being. This group, which represents and guides pediatricians across the country, updated its back-to-school recommendations to say evidence shows the academic, mental, and physical benefit of in-person learning outweighs the risks from the coronavirus. The American Academy of Pediatrics strongly advocates that all policy considerations should start with a goal of having students physically present in school. The importance of in-person learning is well-documented. There's already evidence of the negative impacts on children because of school closures in the spring. Lengthy time away from school and associated interruption of supportive services oftentimes results in social isolation and makes it difficult for schools to identify and address important learning deficits. Additionally, the schools play a very important role in identifying different other concerns such as adolescent physical or sexual abuse, substance abuse, substance use, depression, and suicidal ideation. And with the schools not open, these things are oftentimes overlooked. Schools are not, the schools that are open are not amplifying the spread of the coronavirus. The science is supporting the fact that schools opening has not increased the risk of coronavirus within the community. And so the current gating system are oftentimes being thrown out the window and they're looking more at in-school infection risks for determination of whether to keep face-to-face learning in place. The highest percentage of schools that are following these protocols have not had to close or even change any of their school sessions with face-to-face learning because there has been no increased risk within the community. Of course, the importance of safety measures is something that needs to be addressed. Frequent hand washing or hand sanitizing needs to be implemented. There has been proof that ninety-one percent of the transmission risk is reduced as long as all parties are wearing masks. So masks need to be implemented. There should be at least three feet of social distancing between the students as well as the teachers at all times if possible. So pediatricians and psychologists are raising alarms about the potential impact of the prolonged social isolation on children. Some point through research that has even found an array of benefits of positive peer relationships and children who have them, have these relationships, are more likely to later develop healthy relationships, even more, be more effective at work. Good relationships with peers during the teen years are linked to better health even during adulthood. In certain populations.
I hate to cut you off. You're at the five minutes if you want to just wrap up.
Okay. So I guess I, I hope that you guys do look at the newest science available. Look at what the recommendations are by the American Academy of Pediatrics and the American Academy of Family Physicians. And those recommendations are to return to face-to-face and school learning. Thank you.
Thanks for calling in Tracy, appreciate it.
Yeah, bye-bye.
Hi Lydia, can you hear me?
Oh, hi, this is Lydia Laurijanek at nine oh one South Roosevelt Street.
Yep, go ahead Lydia, all yours.
Great, well, hello again. You know, I, I like everyone else is just kind of listening with all the parents that called in today. And it's overwhelmingly that most people feel the same, so I'm not going to repeat. Just to, but to reiterate that, you know, all of the points that were made were so valid. And as time goes by and as more surveys are, are being sent out, the thing of it is, you guys, the board, there's seven of you affecting twenty thousand students. It's a huge responsibility. And like the parents that called in and, and read Steve's job description, your job description, I mean, that's spot on. No one's perfect. We're not looking for perfection. But what we really are looking for, Steve, Eric, Laura, step up, really. I mean, put your biases aside. There is enough information ten months out to know that the virtual learning is failing the students. And I'm talking to the Board of Education, right? So that's my number one criteria is educating. As I told you guys last time, we're new to the Green Bay area and I couldn't have been more thrilled. As one child that goes to hell, the teachers, lovely, the diversity, the students. I mean, you guys should pat yourselves on the back. The reason why parents want to go to your school so badly is you guys have a great school. Your teachers are excellent. My other son is new and he's at Leonardo da Vinci. I listened to his online schooling. His teachers sound so awesome. I can't wait for him to go there in person. So it's because you guys have a good product that we want it. We're your customers. You did one survey in June that was close to seventy percent said they wanted in-person, in-school learning. Then you did another survey where you tried to slice and dice. You know, if we go on one day and hop on one foot and go another day and we're in certain grades, we can go. And still, parents said, we'll take that better than nothing. I believe that your survey said over seventy percent or close to seventy percent of elementary students would even take that, that crazy model. So overwhelmingly, there's no dispute. You know, it's kind of like the election, right? The Republicans lost. Like Laura, you lost. Laura, you sent emails saying that you just cared about if your teacher gets a vaccination. That was your number one criteria. I urge you to step down. You're so out of touch, so out of touch. My kids, I'm not a music teacher. I'm not an art teacher, chemistry. Our kids, all of our kids, twenty thousand, love learning and want to go to school. And so just to kind of wrap it up, like with my sales team, I'm a sales manager. I look at each person's skills. Some are result-oriented and some are process-oriented. People like Laura and Dawn, they seem, they strike me, and Eric, it's just process. They care more about the process than the outcome, is my opinion, based on their feedback or lack of feedback. Other people are looking at the outcome. So let's have a word called onward. Let's just, all, you know, your constituents, your student body, overwhelmingly, the majority, which you were voted to, you were elected to represent in both two surveys now. The first one was with Survey Monkey. The second one was so hard to get to. I believe that fourteen percent didn't respond, not because they didn't care, but because it was so tricky to get to. We want to go to school and we shouldn't have to convince the school board that school is good, right? Right? I mean, we should not have to be here convincing a school board that school is good for children, right? I mean, just take a breath on that. Parents are calling you, telling you that school is good for children. I hope that stops you in your track. See, we're looking for a leader, step up. And all the other districts have figured it out. One District Plocky, they had all their students, I'm sorry, let me strike that. They had all their teachers start in person, so at least that got back in the habit of the teachers going to school. They're the only ones in the room, so, you know, we can object to that right off the bat. And I know that you're voting or talking, it's on the schedule to at least address the gating criteria. Strike it. Gating gates are to keep people out. Gating has no business in public school education of little people. So when you do discuss gating earlier, I urge you to strike it. And I guess the last thing is it's not too late to pivot, right? Even if we've all made mistakes and made bad choices, or choices we didn't know were bad, now the sun is shining on them and we know we can do better. Pivot, open the schools, get the children in there. Onward should be your word of the day. And, and just do the right thing now and, and step up. And again, I encourage you when you're talking about gating later to just remove it. And all students in all grades overwhelmingly from both your surveys want to go back. So it should be crystal clear. And, you know, prove me wrong, show me your confidence that you can do that. And if you can't, like Laura, if that just makes you uncomfortable.
Lydia, I hate to interrupt. Your five minutes is up.
Yeah. Okay, well, I'm just ending that if that is makes any one of you uncomfortable, like truly uncomfortable to teach children in person, then you're not in the right spot. So thank you for listening to me and I hope that you guys reach in and do the right thing. Thank you.
Thanks, Lydia. Hi Bridget, can you hear me?
Hi, yes, I can.
All right, thank you for calling in tonight. We really appreciate it. If you could start by introducing yourself and giving us your address, and then you'll have five minutes to speak.
All right, my name is Bridget LeJoyce and I live at thirty-sixty-three Essen Road, Green Bay, five four three one one. All right, first, I'd just like to thank Noah and Ella for taking their time to be here tonight. We know it's finals week and I'm sure the hours you're spending here tonight could probably be put to better use. So I'll just begin. I'm a parent of two Preble High School students and I'm coming to you out of extreme sadness, disappointment, and frustration. Today, every other school district in Brown County returned to face-to-face learning in some format except for Green Bay Public Schools. As a parent, I have no idea what to tell my children anymore as to why their school district feels they don't deserve a face-to-face education. As an employee at a private school, I don't know what to tell my coworkers when they ask when my kids will go back to school. Last spring, it was easy to say, hang on, it's just a few weeks, you'll be back soon. Then, as the pandemic grew bigger than anyone could have originally anticipated, it was, it's okay, you'll be back in fall. Then fall hit and Green Bay Public was the only district who had no plans to return to the classroom. I said, let's just wait and see. They have to be working on a plan and you'll be back in a month. It's been ten months and nothing. My children have lost hope, I have lost hope. You as an administration and as a school board have failed and what your purpose is. To do all things reasonable to promote the cause of education. You have failed the nineteen thousand one hundred and ninety-three students of the Green Bay Public Schools. Please do not patronize me and tell me that sports are happening. Students are back in specialty classes. Sports are limited to an extremely small few. Forty-five boys max and even less girls are playing basketball at each high school. None of my children's high school hands-on or lab classes have plans to return. I'm talking woods, biology, anatomy, or physics. In fact, one teacher said that the paperwork required to do so was too much and that they weren't paid to do all that extra work. You have made the process so difficult to purposely keep students out of the building. This week is finals week. If there were fifteen thousand failing grades after that first grading period, how many will there be after this one? And that does not take into account all the A students who are now getting Cs. Many teachers are dumbing down the finals in hopes of students passing. Instead of it being a true semester exam, they are issuing unit or chapter exams. If school was in person, teachers would be spending the full class time reviewing the students to help them pass the exam. So far, not one of my child's teachers have remained on for longer than ten minutes today. Instead, they told them to go do a kahoot review and then study on their own. That would not be happening in a classroom. There needs to be a true discussion from the superintendent and the board members as to what the obstacles are keeping the students out of the classroom. Parents who submit comments and emails are lucky if they get back the same canned copy-and-paste email if they get a response at all from any of you. If nothing concrete and actually achievable is decided tonight, a community roundtable needs to be held safely, masked, and socially distanced at a high school gym. We need to hear what the biggest obstacles are to going back to the classroom. All we hear from you is no. There are never reasons given. The district was given eight million dollars in CARES fund, yet ten months later, we still sit in the same position as we did when the pandemic first began and we were clueless about the virus. Are you concerned about cleaning classrooms? Have the students help out. Give students a sanitizing wipe after each class to wipe down their own desk and chair. It is also easy to sanitize high-touch areas in the classroom. The gray system uses a sanitizer with a thirty-second kill time. It takes just a minute or so to spray everything else down. Is it masking? You'd be surprised how well kids do with them. The older kids want to go back so bad, they're willing to wear them no matter what. And the younger ones have adapted to them just fine. Plus, they remind their classrooms to cover their noses, et cetera. Yet they have any of my fears of them falling in the toilet, being used as slingshots, or tissues come true. Is it spacing in the lunchroom? Limit the number of students per table and put plexiglass up. The elementary schools assign tables to each classroom. Is it busing? Ultimately, that is a decision for first students and they won't know what they need to do until they know exactly how many students will need their service. They know how to do, they know how to bus students safely, as they are doing now with the private schools and the other districts in the county. They will use that same knowledge with our students. Is it the staff that don't want to go back? Is it truly their desire or the union leading the way? As parents, we hear every day from teachers who are telling our children that they want to be in the classroom. Teachers and school staff are essential workers. They need to be in the building to do their jobs just as much as nurses, doctors, and Walmart workers do. The failing grades tell us that they cannot adequately do their jobs virtually, no matter how hard they are working. Online learning and face-to-face learning just cannot compare. The survey results are clear. The majority of Green Bay Public families want their students back in the classroom. This does not mean that it is a one-size-fits-all and that their choice should outweigh those of the families who feel virtual schooling is better for them. In fact, those virtual families help those of us who want our students back in the classroom by freeing up space. We want everyone.
I hate to interrupt you. That's the end of your five minutes if you want to wrap up.
All right, well, just want to say that it's time to have all students who want a face-to-face education, they deserve it now, not after spring break or in April, but now. Thank you.
Thanks for calling, Bridget, appreciate it. All right. Next on our agenda, consent agenda. Is there anything on the consent agenda that anyone would like removed? All right, with that said, I'd look for a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor? Hi.
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 Opposed? All right. Moves everything on our consent agenda. That takes us down to number six legislative update. I'll hand it over to Christina.
Thanks, Eric. I'm going to make this brief because I know we, we have a number of items to get to. In the document tonight, what you'll see in front of us are two things. There is an article and then there's some direct links to assembly bills that were proposed, one of which was passed last week in the assembly on our floor session on Thursday. There is a good article in here by Wisconsin Public Radio about the passage of that bill and some of the concerns around its future being passed by the Senate and then also Governor Evers, if he will sign it into law. There's some key highlights in here that connect to our work in the school board, but connect to our work in the school board, but also in school district, but also throughout our community. Um, I also did also put in here a link to the Assembly Substitute Amendment that was tabled but was put forward for discussion um, on Thursday. It does include um, some provisions around expanding flexibility for public school districts around pu- uh, pupil enrollment and pausing some uh, assessments for the twenty twenty-one school year. That bill didn't go anywhere. Just wanted to let you know about that. And then the other update that I had that's not included on here, but I found out this evening while we were sitting here, is that the Wisconsin Senate will be voting tomorrow on a modified version of the assembly bill that passed last Thursday. That's supposed to be happening tomorrow. Um, those uh, that want to tune in can probably tune into WISI. That will be livestreamed. I'm not sure the time yet. Uh, but that's kind of where we are uh, right now around state uh, legislation.
Any questions for Christina? Go ahead, Karana.
Um, uh, did I read correctly that they dropped the provision about the two-thirds vote to stay virtual?
Nope, that was included in the bill that passed last week uh, in the assembly, so it was voted on party lines. Um, so it would require a two-thirds vote by school boards to ma- remain virtual and school boards would be required to vote uh, every fourteen days to continue virtual learning.
Yeah, but I think they actually, I think they they put forward two provisions or they brought something forward kind of for some leverage. They, I'm almost positive they actually took that out today.
Well, the assembly didn't. That was part of the, it might be in the Senate version, so maybe that's in the. Uh, yeah, I don't know. I haven't seen the Senate version of that, but what was passed last week by the Assembly what did include that? Um, yeah, I I haven't seen the Senate version, so you might be right about that.
Okay, thanks.
All right, no other questions. Thank you, Christina. All right, uh, three discussion items under number seven tonight. The first is a pandemic update related to education and operations and I'll hand it over to Superintendent Merely.
Thank you. So uh, the first item on there, uh, is just a quick update. Uh, you see the two uh, uh, updates that provided on Monday to the board in there on the fifth and the eleventh. Uh, and then uh, the other piece in there uh, is a result of the uh, questions uh, to the community, uh, to the parents. Uh, there are four slides in there. Uh, just real quickly, uh, the first two, uh, the one on the left tells you about uh, the number of kids in the district and how they're distributed grades. Uh, and then um, right now, we are up to eighty-eight percent of our uh, families uh, indicating uh, which uh, modality they prefer. Uh, the numbers are holding fairly steadily in terms, steady in terms of percentages, which is about um, sixty percent uh, preferring a blended learning opportunity when we hit the gating criteria and twenty-six percent uh, preferring to stay virtual when we hit the gating criteria. Uh, and uh, again, we're down to twelve percent in the no response category. I think it's really important for us uh, collectively to to express uh, our gratitude to the school staff, uh, and this includes uh, teachers, counselors, psych, social workers, um, I, student family advocates, uh, uh, the entire team um, for reaching out to those that didn't initially respond in order to get their feedback. Excuse me, on the second two slides, uh, you see the preference uh, by uh, grade band. Um, so you can see the uh, percentages that uh, uh, preferred uh, to be in a blended learning environment uh, at the high school, middle school and elementary school uh, and those uh, preferring virtual learning. Uh, as you can see, the numbers are fairly consistent and approximately twenty-six percent uh, preferring virtual learning at each uh, of those uh, uh, grade bands. Um, the preference for blended learning uh, was strongest at the elementary uh, and uh, approximately uh, uh, seventy-seven percent in the uh, low fifties uh, at the uh, middle school and the high school. We just wanted you to have that data. Uh, that team continues to work uh, to gather uh, feedback uh, from those that who have not responded. Uh, and the intentionality behind that is to make sure that uh, we have their expressed opinion and we're not simply making uh, assumptions about where they would prefer to be. So let me stop uh, there and ask if you have questions about that uh, for either I or members of the admin.
Steve, I do have a question. How, I I'm looking particularly at high school. How do those numbers spread out across all four of our high schools?
I do have that. Uh, I don't have it by high school at hand, so um, we were able to disaggregate that data, obviously, by school. Uh, and part of the rationale for us uh, starting to look at that is to understand uh, if there are uh, uh, specific schools that may be uh, more heavily weighted to one modality or the other, the implication that might have for us uh, when it comes to physical distancing uh, in the schools.
Go ahead, Andrew.
Um, how many, we we hear about people leaving, you know, leaving the district, which and there are, yes, there are rules to that, but how many, how many disenrollments have we had? I mean, is this, uh, you know, people are saying that they have moved or or changed districts through a dual custody arrangement or something? We should know at any given time how many students we we have, right?
Um, we do through uh, Infinite Campus. Um, I've asked Josh to look into that. Uh, the system isn't necessarily set up uh, to readily retrieve that data, so he is working on uh, determining whether or not that's something that we will be able to uh, gather. I know there've been uh, quite a few emails that have asserted that, and so uh, we would like to try to develop a database uh, that'll allow you to be able to see those numbers, so. Uh, one of the big challenges, I see Josh just came on here. Uh, one of the big challenges is uh, uh, we can see them easily when we do official counts, uh, but in between there, we have more difficulty with it. Josh, if you've got something to add, I'd turn the floor over to you.
Yeah, I I just wanted to add, you know, we did have a, an official count, uh, third Friday in September, which everyone here is familiar with, of course, and and the um, majority of the enrollment losses were at the four K and kindergarten level, so that's what makes it difficult to know where they would go, because it's not like they were in the system and left. They kind of never got here. Um, but yeah, we're going to do our best to track that down.
I I'm really confused as to why a system that's so fundamental, it's not you, Josh, it's the system. Like, why special programming would be needed to not, you know, why couldn't just be, and I'm I'm just using a term that people are familiar with. I realize it runs deeper than that, but uh, a pivot table and you know how many rows are in it, right? I mean, how, what, what's more fundamental than whether a kid is in our district or or out of our district? Like, how how could we? I mean, yes, there might be people who make a change and were not informed, but for example, if someone does go to another school district, they are unenrolled from ours and enrolled in the other ones. I understand there's other gray areas that might not be caught, so how can you know, a lot of money is spent on a, such a fundamental system that's necessary for for everyone. How how can it not produce that easily?
We um, we are able to to see how many enrollments um, have ended. Um, the difficulty is where they've gone. Uh, it's not that difficult with respect to um, open enrollment, but um, with respect to moves, with respect to um, leaving for um, potentially private schools, like it's a a bit more tricky. Um, because there's not a system that tracks the student after they leave our system, if that makes any sense. But uh, we we can, we could get broad categories, Andrew.
I mean, if a student goes to, like, if for for, if a student goes to DPier public, they do unenroll with us formally and enroll there, right? Maybe in the reverse order, but they they do that.
Yes.
Yeah, if they go to a private school, I would assume maybe they could start doing that without ever doing the paperwork with us and so that might be incomplete. Um, okay, so so I understand, and of course, if someone opted to officially do homeschooling, again, that, you know, so I understand that it wouldn't capture everything, but I guess if we, I may, I would have a different level of concern, even knowing that all we can know for sure is public districts. I would have a different level of concern if it was still concerned, of course, if we are minus twenty-eight since the beginning of the year or if we're minus six hundred since the beginning of the year, you know, those two. I think it's important to have whatever context we can, understanding that only in a public to public is the paperwork, you know, mandatory on both sides.
And second Friday in um, January is also an official count date, which just passed last Friday, so um, we'd be able to very shortly get a comparison between the two count dates.
I thought it was a little bit later, so yes, you're, you're right, that's, that's key, so. All right, thank you.
Go ahead, Laura. Oh, I'm sorry, and then Rhonda.
Um, Steve, I'm looking at this document, um. Can you, can you tell me, so I I see the term return to campus plan? Um, can you, can you talk a little bit about what these return to campus plans are? And what they signify? I I mean, I know there's a lot of work being done behind the scenes, getting um, you know, preparing for when our, you know, students are back in school. Um, and and a lot of planning and and things being put in place so that uh, when that happens, you know, can go smoothly, but what does that term mean, return to campus?
Uh, when we have students that are uh, back on site, uh, either uh, partial or full-time.
Okay, and each school has that?
Yes, that's uh, part of the the planning, uh, recognizing that each uh, facility uh, has uh, different opportunities and different challenges in front of it. Um, so we've outlined broad expectations, uh, whether that's uh, uh, again, looking at your mitigation strategies. Um, what's your your process for um, use of the restroom, for hand washing? What's your process for hand sanitizing? Where do you locate it, classroom, the building? Uh, what type of physical distancing can you create? Uh, both in classrooms and in common spaces and in passing times? How do you arrange your schedule to uh, minimize the number of students in the hallway at any one given time? Uh, so those are the types of things that each school um, is looking at individually. Um, we've got some collective overarching uh, uh, support that's provided in each of those areas, but then that has to be localized in each school.
Okay, just, I know this is, this will be a hard question, but in general terms, would you say there are sign- really significant differences between our buildings? Um, I mean, there must be, because you, how do you compare Preble, which is way, you know, overcrowded and has been for quite a long time to um, you know, a small, a school like Beaumont, you know? But, I mean, how do you, um, so each, each, each school has to be incredibly individual, I would think, about each of these plans?
It does, and if you recall, one of the questions that Dawn asked earlier was uh, the uh, response rate uh, and the uh, election uh, at each one of our schools. Um, and that certainly has a a different impact uh, on the school, uh, with approximately uh, twenty-six percent of our our children at this point in time and their families um, choosing online. Uh, that's not evenly distributed across the district, so we have some buildings that have uh, a higher percentage of of families choosing that and some that have uh, families uh, that are choosing that at a lower percentage rate. Um, that impacts the number of students that'll be present in those schools when they come back to campus. Uh, and that then has an impact uh, on the planning process that the buildings are going through.
And just so people understand that there is a lot of work being done behind the scenes on all of this. Um, what, who makes up, I mean, who are, who, who's on the team on each, in each of these buildings? And are those teams proportion, proportionate to the population numbers in those schools? Or like, what are those team, what are those teams look like in those, how, that are making, coming up with these plans?
Sure, so at the district level, uh, there are some uh, large-scale teams uh, that uh, represent uh, different operational areas and different employee groups. We have a lot of end-user experience in there so that they can uh, talk about what things will look like uh, when they actually are implemented. Um, when that information is taken out to the building level, there are building leadership teams in each building. Uh, and uh, then their uh, task is to take uh, those large-scale uh, planning components and then localize them to their schools.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, go ahead, Rhonda, sorry.
I have some questions for you, Steve. Um, I like your opinion on Dane County, their public health department raising their gating criteria to five hundred. Now, obviously, that's their county health department. Um, schools can make decisions based on, you know, what they want to do, but I'd just like your opinion on that. Um, their comments are that research is showing that having schools open, especially with the youngest learners, does not increase community spread. Now, this is Dane County's health department. Um, and when I hear that, what I'm hearing is that they are urging by their comments for maybe schools to get younger students in the buildings. Um, you know, this is, I'm assuming this, you know, you're meeting with the big five. I hear that a lot. Um, that had to have been a conversation and and I'd like your opinion on that.
So for my first uh, reaction would be that uh, that's exactly the direction uh, that uh, we have uh, been talking about in terms of uh, the youngest learners being um, the students that uh, we would bring back first. There's a couple of reasons for that. Uh, and and probably first and foremost among those is that operationally, uh, it's much easier for us uh, to do physical distancing uh, and to do cohorting uh, within the school with our elementary children. Um, we've got the ability to um, localize them to their classroom uh, with a smaller group of students uh, for a majority, if not entirety of their day. Um, that's much more difficult for us to do uh, at the middle level and the high school level. Uh, where just by necessity, uh, we're going to have much more passing time uh, and kids are going to have uh, classrooms with different students in them. Uh, so uh, it is uh, operationally, uh, much more feasible to bring uh, younger children back first. Uh, and I would agree with uh, what the Dane County Health Department is saying, that um, younger children, uh, based on on what I've been told, uh, what I've read, um, our youngest uh, children are uh, perhaps uh, least susceptible uh, to the virus. I I do know that uh, there's been quite a bit written, uh, just recently about uh, their their uh, role as vectors, um, in terms of transmitting the virus, but uh, we do know that uh, the research says that um, they are far less likely to be symptomatic uh, and less likely to have uh, significant illness when they are symptomatic. Uh, so I think that aligns with what we've been told.
Okay, so based on those comments and based on what you've been hearing and and what you're feeling about that, knowing that this format that we are in, the all-virtual format, has created quite a liability, I believe, for many families, our district in general. What is the reason why we wouldn't get on this? That we wouldn't move forward, that we wouldn't start planning, that we wouldn't implement, that we wouldn't have some urgency? Is there any reason we wouldn't do that?
I don't think that uh, the planning uh, is the issue. Uh, I think that uh, the implementing uh, is the issue and I think it goes right to comments that have been made by uh, members of the community uh, during the comment section. Uh, I, I think that uh, uh, we know what uh, the scientific experts have told us uh, about community spread and about burden rates and about their impact. Uh, and I, as many of the community commenters stated, uh, the choice is to continue to uh, work through that scientific process and make a determination on reentry uh, based on that criteria or, as many of them said, simply just abandon the burden rate and just send kids back to school on an arbitrary date. Uh, so I think that's really the choice that's, that uh, that they posed, and I think um, that's the decision-making process uh, that many boards have gone through. Uh, they've looked at science, they've used it initially, and then they've thrown it out and just picked a a random arbitrary date and said, that's the date we're bringing kids back.
But let's go back to Dane County. But let's go back to Dane County because they, they're not picking a date. They're talking about, they picked the number five-hundred and they've spoke to that being, um, that they feel that actually is a number they could get youngest learners into their schools. So let's go back to that, right? Let's talk about, um, that that's something that, from what it sounds like, you, you buy into or you, you've signed on to, or you believe is, is to be true. And so why would we not consider raising our gating criteria in order to do that? If, if in fact, that that is something that a public health department not too far away from us is saying, Dane County knows they have a, a very fairly large school district, um, in their, in their county. Um, this is direction that they're giving. Um, I guess I'd like to understand why we would not consider, and maybe we send another survey quickly out to see what those numbers would look like at five-hundred. Um, I'm not considering like, we, we drop it entirely, but maybe we start thinking about something like that. Because if we, if we stay where we're at right now, knowing that the implication of how, how many families that we are hearing from, and we are hearing from many of them. And I believe that their feedback matters. Looking at what we need to do to even just have some movement at all, do we believe that we will ever see our youngest learners in at two-fifty? And if you, if you feel in fact that research is showing that having schools open, especially with the youngest learners, does not increase community spread, which, which is what I heard you say, that you agreed with that, then why wouldn't we consider asking our community what they, how they would feel if we in fact went forward as Dane County has and raised the gating criteria?
So I just want to jump in for a second to, with regard to the agenda. So right now, we're supposed to be talking about our survey. The very next discussion is the hybrid model and then the gating criteria. So, um, just wanna, maybe we just pause. I, I don't think, I, I want you to be able to say and get your answers, Rhonda, on the questions that you have. But, uh, maybe we should jump into six-twelve hybrid model and then we'll go to gating criteria. Then we're posted for action if we, we want to take any action on either of those things.
Can I come back to it though?
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. I just, I, I'd like to hear some of the other updates and then that can be part of a, a, a bigger discussion.
Thank you.
Yep. Um, any other questions about the survey specifically?
Uh, is this the, is this the part where something that isn't specifically rotation and isn't specifically gating would fit because it's education and operations?
Yeah, I think so. If you had a, a separate.
Okay. I want to know how many classes actually get approved for onsite? Do we have lab science classes that are meeting?
Well, I don't have a list of those directly in front of me right now. Uh, I know that that process is still underway. Vicky just came on here and I know she's been, uh, working with those teams as they've gone through that approval process. I don't know if you've got anything to add right now, Vicky, or if that's something we can provide to them, uh, moving forward.
Yeah, I'm, I'm looking for the document right now. Um, if I find it in the next couple of minutes, I'll let you know.
I mean, it's, it's anecdotal that one caller today said, said that they heard from a teacher that the, the paperwork was, was too much. But I, very early on, I warned about that. Um, I know that there are applications that are getting, that are either getting denied or they're not, or they're not making it, uh, even through the process. Um, this is not, this is not a district where creative outside-the-box thinking has been rewarded. Um, compromises, even board-authored compromises have resulted in administrative retaliation in the past, before this administration, before any, um, before any of the senior administrators here, uh, were here, okay? People don't, people don't forget that. People remember what happened when they wanted to do the board compromise and cut a different position than the one initially proposed. People remember that. And they're not gonna step out of line and fill out a form, especially if the form still leads with such cautious language as to suggest that if it were me and I read that, unless it's changed a lot, my reading of it as a teacher, especially a rookie teacher, would be, okay, they said absolutely necessary. Let me demonstrate this lab virtually. I'll do it in my house. I mean, it's the way it's worded. Don't do this unless you absolutely have to. And then you end up with just certain classes doing it. I, I have, there's another part of this too besides, um, I also want to know what we, we're doing because I, I want some of these specialty classes to, to get, to have that chance. I also want to honor staff, staff concern and staff safety. So are we thinking about, could another adult be the hands in the room? Even if the teacher of the specialty class is on the screen? Are we looking at that? Or is that so outside of the box that we're not thinking about that either? I mean, there's, I respect if someone is the sole caregiver for elderly parents and shouldn't be in a, in a classroom. But we've got to have other adults who are not in that situation, would love to be around kids, who could be the extra. They could be the physical eyes and ears in the classroom while the teacher of the specialty class. But, but do we even, have we even thought of that? Does that even come up in it? It has? It good?
Yeah, we, we've, we've absolutely considered remote instruction and, and we've considered in lots of, uh, uh, conditions. You know, if we've got, uh, if we're back onsite, uh, and a teacher has to quarantine or isolate and they're still, uh, feeling physically capable of teaching, uh, we want to make sure that they can continue to do so. And, and, uh, uh, and having, uh, uh, support staff, uh, provide physical supervision for students' classes while teachers teach remotely, that is definitely something that we've been, uh, talking about.
So that, that's, yeah, you need that for sure. I, but that's, um, that's after, that's after return to blended. What about these? Um, and again, I'm not passing, there's more than one reason why, if we look at the shop classes, there, there's any number of possible reasons why one school's teacher submitted the form and it got approved and another, another school didn't. Could it, maybe it was the paperwork. Maybe that teacher, uh, is not safe to go in the classroom yet. Um, maybe the paperwork was submitted and got, I mean, we don't know what it is, but some of those we could do something about. And again, I would not at all be, I, I would never expect, uh, and nor would I put it on a, a teacher or probably even a principal to be the one to say, to go to the teacher and say, look, you know, you have a hands-on class. Can you do it? I, no, I can't. I'm not, I'm not safe. Okay, let, you know, let's work on a plan. I think that's gotta come from up top, that it's okay to say, I'd like to teach this class. I'd, I'd like to have some hands-on sessions for kids, but I can't, uh, I can't be the one in person. But let's find a way to do it. Uh, and that's about now, not after blended. I'm glad we've got that, you know, after blended. But again, I just, we are, we are really good now and historically at, and a lot of things. But outside the box is not one of them, despite the fact that we've been given essentially a golden ticket from the state with many waivers of many things. So, yeah, it, it does, it, it, it really bothers me that we have these differences in the, the shop classes. Because I think if one of the teachers and whatever classes, because I think we could have tried to find a different way for things like a shop class culinary arts, that has to have the hands-on component. And assuming that what we heard was, um, well, I don't, I'm, I'm, I mean, I'm sure it's, I'm sure it's correct what was shared with us. I don't know how widespread it is. If we have districts, if we have colleges that are gonna throw out even a five on an EP test if there were no in-person labs, that's extremely serious, especially since one semester is, is gone. Um, so I do know that there are certainly, because of paperwork, bureaucratic, whatever reasons, that at least some teachers who would like to try it are, are not getting through this paperwork.
So I can, I, I can, uh, let Vicky speak to that, uh, actual, uh, uh, application process. But, uh, um, I know that the goal has been to approve as many of those as possible. Uh, they look at multiple factors, uh, when they go through that process, uh, including how many students are allowed into the school at any one given time and try to balance that out. Uh, but, uh, it's my understanding, and, and again, I'll let Vicky speak to that. But, um, the goal is not to put up a barrier, right? The goal is to actually, uh, move those students into those classes. Um, the process is set up to make sure that, um, for instance, you have an effective safety plan in place, um, which is really designed to make sure that the staff, which would be the, uh, the teacher and the principal, um, have taken into consideration all those mitigation factors, which we think keep students and staff safe. Um, so rather than just saying, I'm going to come back and I'm going to bring my kids back, um, the form simply asks you to say, and in doing so, how will you meet, uh, the safety requirement? So Vicky, I don't know if there's more that you'd like to add to this, uh, conversation.
Thanks. Mr. Becker, we've approved, uh, seventy different requests so far. Uh, they keep coming in daily and the health and safety team, as a reminder, uh, they go through the document. And upon their approval, they send it to a subcommittee that looks for equitable practices, such as you're talking about, Mr. Becker. We want to make sure that if something is offered at one school, that we figure out how it can happen at all of the schools that offer the same thing.
As long as it's that kind of equity, because sometimes it works, sometimes it plays out the other way. And in a, perhaps in a well-meaning intent to not over-privileged someone, right? We, we've thrown it out. But if, if the equity committee is saying, hey, school A found a way to do a lab science class safely, now let's go back and talk to the other schools. If that's what we're really doing, then, then that's good. Um, so seventy were approved. How many were, how many are not initially approved? And I realize that not initially approved might mean it's going back for something as simple as, hey, you didn't fill out the safety plan. You certainly are free to use the one that, the standard district safety plan, but we need you to say that you're gonna do it.
Yeah, that's correct. I don't have a number for that, um, because we work with them to meet the needs that, that we're looking for. So there aren't any hanging out there right now. Um, I'm just looking through the document.
I mean, I'm happy to hear about seventy, but I still, I still think, and if, if this equity committee is, is really going back, then okay, then we're gonna have places that are not doing it because they think they're wasting their time to fill out the paperwork, are gonna be approached by someone. Specifically, do we, and I don't need to know which ones, but do we have some? Uh, we hear about like shop, uh, tech ed. Do we have lab, at least some lab science classes that have been approved for some meetings? Okay. So if, if that equity subcommittee then is reaching out saying, here's how we got it going at, at school A, and we're prepared to offer options, like school B, the teacher would say, I mean, we know they would all love to do the lab. Teacher B says, I can't. I'm caring for a family member at home. I can't be, I, I cannot yet be out in the community. If someone's then telling him, okay, you be the, you be the presenter and we'll get some adults in there to make it work, then, then okay. Um, that was, that was just my big thing. Paperwork and, and, um, structures and levels can be intimidating, especially here where for many years they were a tool to prevent, um, rocking the boat. That, that isn't the intent here. But you have to understand these many, many years of history going along before any of us. So I, I'm more optimistic about what I heard today than what I thought coming in. So thank you.
Go ahead, Brenda.
Along the same lines, um, Vicky, have you, do you know if the committee has, um, refused any applications?
It did early on, Dr. Warren. Um, one of the first questions is, uh, can this be done remotely successfully? And, uh, FFA had put in a request, uh, oh my goodness, I think this was back in November. Um, but they weren't, they were able to successfully at that point continue virtually. So that one was denied.
And that, that's it? Cause we, we got some, uh, communication today from a, a teacher who said she had been denied. She wanted to do some sort of IB teacher prep or, uh, test prep with, with students. You don't know anything about that?
Can you send me the name, please?
Yeah, I'll just send you the email we got or the, the communication email we got.
Thank you.
Thanks, Vicky. Um, and then another, another question I have, this changes the subject a little bit. But if, as we look at the, each individual school's opening plans, are we, um, obviously there has to be some flexibility, but I guess my question is, how much flexibility are we providing the schools in terms of, you know, how they match teachers to students? How they group students, um, uh, you know, all, all of those kinds of things? Is that something that, cause it's, as you've, I think you mentioned, Steve, that the people that have, or the students that have signed up for virtual aren't the same proportion at each of the schools. So it seems to me like we would have, the schools have some flexibility to be able to design, uh, their plan, um, based on their actual numbers and their actual school building and their actual, um, uh, their actual needs. So I'm just curious what that, those conversations have been like.
Well, I'll just offer and then I'll, I'll let, uh, Vicky and Carrie, who are both live here, chime in. But it's a bit of a matchmaking process, right? So we have to look at, uh, teachers who have ADA and FMLA accommodations and determine, uh, you know, essentially what's the roster look like, uh, for teachers at that school. And now that we're, uh, uh, by the way, I apologize because, uh, we're actually down to only about eleven percent non-response rate. Um, we're up over twenty-seven percent in terms of those that have elected virtual. So, um, it's now a process of determining, uh, what's the staff roster look like at the school? Uh, and what's the student roster look like at the school? What does the match look like? And, uh, uh, do we have more of one than the other? Uh, might that necessitate some shifting of staff? Uh, uh, and, uh, and then, uh, do we have enough staff to meet the needs of those who are, uh, going to remain virtual? So, uh, it's a little bit difficult to answer that question, Brenda, simply because we're still in the middle of that matchmaking process. But, um, I'd, uh, certainly, uh, uh, get some input here from Vicky and Carrie.
Can I, can I add one more, um, uh, question to this, to this? Um, I guess one of, I had feedback from, um, somebody that, um, somebody who works in our district. And, um, they said something like the, uh, some of the schools might decide to do, instead of the virtual teacher just does virtual and the in-person teacher just, just does in-person, that, that an individual school might decide to have some of that, uh, forget what it's called. Where, you know, teachers are teaching virtually and in-person simultaneously. The, um, the, the original hybrid blended model that most school districts, if you talk to people from them or, you know, will tell you don't work. But, but if, if there were a situation when something like that, um, would come up and it made sense in one particular school, is that, is that something that we would allow schools to have, um, that degree of flexibility?
Yeah, um, thank you. The only reason I popped on, I wasn't sure if Terry was gonna be able to join us, so. Yeah, um, thank you. The only reason I popped on, I wasn't sure if Terry was gonna be able to join us, so thank you, Terry. Um, she's been working hard with her team to get all of the data we need to be able to begin this process of matching students with the virtual teacher and an onsite teacher. And uh, we started meeting uh late Friday afternoon and then again, early this morning to start hashing out those details, so Terry, please.
Asking great questions and I apologize if my voice is a little off, I'm um under the weather. This past week, so my apologies. We do have a process um that we are going to be working through and continuing to work collaboratively with our building leaders and. The supervisors of schools, we will be, as Steve mentioned, looking at those approved requests for. Um, American with Disability Act accommodations, Family Medical Leave Act. Um necessities and and I know that several board members spoke about um working with staff. That have gone through those uh processes as well as those that have expressed a preference. Uh, for that virtual teaching, looking at the enrollments. And homeschool sites as well as looking at data points such as seniority, specialized training, licensure. All of those factors that go into a typical staffing process. And we do have a plan um that we will be able to go through um using guiding principles and using that process. To do that matching and um ensure that we have our staffing in place for the model and we are ready. Please let me know if I didn't answer the question specifically, if you'd like more information.
Uh, go ahead, Andrew.
Okay, um, I I would have deferred, just know I clicked the the hand, but this is specifically to to Terry, so. Um. Alright, so what? Oh yeah, I'm not, I'm, I don't need to ask about what happens if. Someone clearly qualifies personally for a a medical exemption, because I have no worry that we're we're doing those right. I mean, guidance is a little more clear-cut on those. Um. What about um, I mean, the example I tend to just pull out is, you know, one of those. One of those gray areas where a person would be considered medically safe to be in a classroom with our gating criteria as it is. But is not in a position because of other considerations that maybe wouldn't meet the letter of of FMLA. So are we, are we accommodating those? And and I guess by accommodating those, I don't mean by taking a leave of absence, although I know some some people who are in a. Fortunate. Fortunate position to be able to make that choice if, you know. If if they wish to take a leave of absence during the year of COVID and. Okay, that's that's a choice, I'm glad we're offering that choice, but that's not the reality for, that's not the reality for most most people, so. Where where are things at with those, you know, with those gray areas?
Yep, all of our um building leaders are communicating directly with staff. Um, to see, you know, what their preferences are and gather um information and share that we'll be going through a process. And again, I mentioned earlier, we have guiding principles that we have co-created and and agreed to to follow that include. A lot of um data points, looking at homeschool first, looking at um staffing within the uh partner or. Sister schools and and quadrant and uh working collectively together. We will accommodate everything we possibly can and work with um our staff to make sure that everyone is structured for success. We we do have a process in place and we'll be communicating um those. We are prioritizing the approved ADA and FMLA um pieces that have already been processed. And then we do have a process in place so that we can work with preferences and we can um work together collaboratively with staff. We have also extended every opportunity we can to be flexible and to work together with our um. With our staff to meet everyone's needs and that would include the opportunity to take a non-paid leave of absence. There's been inquiries regarding retirements, there've been inquiries regarding um. Flexibility with job share arrangements, we're exploring all of those and doing everything that we can to be responsive and supportive. Working with our building leaders and working at the district level um to ensure that we have that. Uh centralized picture as well as the building specific picture.
Okay, but and that's, but again, that when the, you know, the flexibility that can come down to. That can manifest itself in a couple ways, right? One way would be, we tried as hard as we could to accommodate as many preferences as as we could and the term preferences. I just wanna be clear, I don't, there aren't. I suppose it's possible among three thousand plus employees, but I don't know of any case where there's actually a. Preference to not work, there are, there are people who want to work offsite for a reason that they wouldn't qualify individually medically that are very. Legitimate, so I I don't know a better word for it, but. You know, it's one thing if we go through those, meet as many as we can and then say at the end. We're we're stuck, there are some left over, there's more of these than there are people teaching virtual. You can say we, you can say we fought hard and did as much as we could and didn't quite get there. Or are we then saying, hey, under normal circumstances, we wouldn't be able to do this, but. Now we're gonna be, we're gonna look at beaming you in remote with paras or other adults. Taking care of the physical supervision, that's not only if you start and get quarantined, but like from the the get-go. Or I mean, is that, is that on the, is that on the table? And retirements, retirements can be a voluntary solution, yes. But you also, I know of at least one case where you came within a. A a whisker of losing one of our, one of our very best. Teachers in this district. Um, ultimately, he decided he didn't have to do that because um. And I think maybe that situation is more clear-cut, but even even knowing there was a medical. Came within a whisker of losing someone to a retirement much early than it, earlier than it has to happen, I don't wanna lose that. That talent, so if that flexibility really means flexibility. Getting be, getting beyond just, well, hey, classroom has to have a licensed teacher or it's not. Or it can't run, there's, we've been given a lot of leeway by the state and. To be clear, I'm not talking about un-classrooms with no adult, of course, I'm not talking about that, I never have and I never will. Okay.
Go ahead, Noah.
Mr. President, I'll keep it brief, uh, sorry to go back to it, but there's just one piece I didn't. Might just not have understood properly about the the committee and um. How an application, is it generally, would it be expected that at the building level? Those applications would kind of be filtered before they would reach that committee? Cause I think that might be where some of the confusion about one, when things are denied is coming up, I just kind of want to understand how that works if that is possible.
Yeah, Noah, if you could provide a specific examples, that would be helpful and if you don't have that information tonight, uh, you can always email me. And Dr. Warren, I did hear from the teacher, the IB teacher and um she's in the process actually of completing the paperwork, so there was no denial yet.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, sorry.
Go, no, go ahead, Brenda.
Um, so back to uh the one question that I asked that I don't think was quite answered yet, and I guess that's the um. I I know, you know, we've, we've talked about having uh virtual classrooms and in-person classrooms. And I'm just wondering if, and I I don't expect there to be a lot of situations like this, but but might there be? A need at a at a certain school to kind of tweak that um in a way that makes sense to everybody who's being asked to do it? Um, to to meet the needs of their classes, I don't have any specific examples, but um. Um, anyway, I'm just wondering if we're, if we're allowing uh some flexibility in the school. In the school building itself in terms of how the the teaching is um is is delivered.
We actually met and spoke on that um this morning and we do have the ability to uh be flexible. And we did talk about what that might look like for um certain circumstances where you may have some classes that you are teaching onsite. And some classes that you are teaching virtually or where you may actually have uh both happening simultaneously. Um, and uh, so again, we are exploring um options and working with. With the teams at the buildings around what makes the most sense. And what that looks like in working collaboratively with teaching and learning as well as the executive directors of schools, building leadership. Building leadership teams, all of those pieces, um Brenda, so um that's a great question. And we want to make sure that we're offering the best that we can and um allowing for some of that to occur.
Yeah, okay, that, yeah, that sounds great, thanks.
Go ahead, Rhonda.
I just wanted to put a plug in for chemistry, because I've heard from several people that that's a class that. Sounds like there's a lot of students and they need uh someone to be creative about maybe going into different part of the building so they they can actually. Participate in that.
Right, um. There aren't any other questions here, obviously, we're gonna have a lot of discussion here tonight um around this topic, but we'll we'll move on to uh. Part B of the discussion, uh which is rotation of grade six twelve and the hybrid model. Uh, this was a request from Andrew at the last meeting to make sure that it was on there. Um, and just a point of clarification, uh, we've got this posted under discussion and then gating criteria under discussion. And um as we get through those, if there are any, any, if any board member wants to make a motion, there's no recommended motions tonight, but we do have it posted for action, so. We'll have the discussion on hybrid model, when that discussion wraps up, we don't have to make a motion there, we'll then move on to gating criteria. Um, and then any motions that may come forward will will then be handled in item number eight. Um, and if there aren't any motions, then we'll we'll skip over those, so just wanted to, a point of clarification there, so. Uh, that being said, we'll go to pandemic update, rotation, hybrid model six twelve, I'll hand it to Steve first and then we'll open it up for discussion.
Thanks, uh, so what we did was, uh, we put a couple of uh examples out there, uh, so that we had something to work from. Uh, and then uh, we reached out to our building teams uh and asked for I uh their input, their review on it. Uh, and uh, in the attachment, uh, you can see that there are two different models at the middle level. Cause we have three grade levels at the middle school, the one model takes example or takes advantage of all four instructional days. Uh, and rotates them through, uh, and that's model A on there, uh, that option B. I uh works with a uh a straight process, where you have sixth grader on Monday, seventh on Tuesday. Uh, virtual learning on Wednesday, eighth on Thursday and virtual learning on Friday. So using those as just two mental constructs, then um we ask uh the leadership team, I I at the district uh level, the billing level. Uh, to consider both advantages and disadvantages to those two models. I, and uh, at the middle level, the advantages fell in um several large categories, the in-person connection. Uh, that we know happens when we have kids in classrooms with teachers. Uh, they talked about, excuse me, some operational efficiency issues. Uh, that they'd be able to uh I take advantage of. I, some safety issues uh that they thought were a plus uh by having single grades in at a time. I, and uh, some food service, I uh pluses, especially for that option B. I, you drop down to the complexity or the disadvantages, rather, uh, complexity. Uh, most of those you'll note are directly related to option A because of its rotational model. I, they talked about some concerns about some multi-grade level courses. Uh, because you have some students, uh, at one grade level taking classes in another. And the question was, how would that work um for those students uh with the schedule that would have them crossing uh grades? They talked about the grade six transition, I, and and obviously you would lose that, uh, there's one counterproposal in there that said you could go with the. A six, seven, virtual, eight, six model, see that the sixth graders in twice on the week instead of once. Uh, and then there was a concern which kind of goes back to that issue of the multi-grade level courses about synchronous and asynchronous instruction. And what the uh responsibility for students and staff would be, uh, if they were out of cycle uh in that model. Uh, dropping down to the high school, uh, we uh provided as an example for them. I, ninth graders on Monday, tenth graders on Tuesday, eleventh graders on Thursday, twelfth graders on Friday. Uh, again, the in-person connection, you can see there are multiple, I uh, pieces of feedback there about. On the importance of providing that uh direct connection between students and staff, they again cited some operational efficiency issues and some safety issues. Um, and and maybe uh, on this goes back to all the questions you asked, obviously, with I having more kids at the. The high school and the elementary level, um, having a quarter of the kids in at a time, uh, presented a significant uh uh space benefit for them. I, and then a staffing uh benefit that they uh saw as part of that process. Or disadvantage, uh, they again talked about the complexity issues, uh, that go along with that type of rotation. Much more, I uh, much greater concerns about the multi-grade level courses, because um you see much more of that at the high school level. Some concerns about uh grade nine transition, um, quite a few concerns about uh safety uh that were expressed. I, and then many more concerns about that synchronicity, synchronous instruction piece, and just a reminder, that's. That's the issue that Brenda brought up uh earlier, where um you may have some students who are onsite and some students who are offsite at the same time. I, and how does the instructor provide I for the needs of students, I, when you don't have them all in one position or the other, either all offsite or all onsite? Uh, and then there were a couple of special education issues that were raised. Um, so the, again, the intent behind this was to give them an example. I, we're not saying that either one of these are the example or the the perfect way to do this. Um, but it uh gave us an opportunity then to reach out uh to those uh leaders at the the building and and staff at the. I district office building in order to uh begin to look at what some of the. I, the advantages were to doing that and some of the concerns that were associated with that. So I'm gonna stop there and see if there are questions that uh we can answer for you before you head your discussion.
Go ahead, Andrew. You're on mute.
Thank you. So unlike some other things, I I I have to say that for me, the the feedback that I've gotten about only. Six and nine being present. That one's been pretty close to unanimous, I mean, uh, some will say no grades six and up should, uh, we, a few of those, but. Um. No, you know, six, we can't do just six and just nine and we can't do. Just six and just nine, but we'll get back to you when we feel the administrative team has made determinations, even though I believe you'd be trying to find that opportunity. This is one of those things that's too big and has to be owned, and the board has to have ownership on that, so. Um. So maybe a straight, uh, you know, I I also, I also absolutely can't support something that creates an extra virtual only. Day, um, you know, we're saying that we need one virtual, one virtual only day, I I guess I can. That's not the biggest point I, for me to push for after once blended has started, if that's. Where it's at, but I I guess I would rather see middle school be, you know, two days, uh. So pretty similar to option A, except I don't see why you would. Um, like, I don't see why weeks one, two and three would have to be different, right? If. Just pick two days for sixth and a day for seventh and a day through eighth. And I've. So many people have told me that if if kids could just get. It in person for for one day. You know, we'll do, we'll follow your instructions. Like, I'm gonna make my kids mask. I'm gonna make my kids follow the rules. I'm not even gonna have to try hard to make them because they want this. I think. And as I guess as far as a motion. I that I'm thinking about, it would probably be something along the lines of saying that. The hybrid model for grade six to twelve would include all grades being in school. At least one day per week and without creating additional virtual only days. I I don't, I don't think the board necessarily needs to get into the. Detail of an A, B, C rotation. I I'm willing to concede that an A, B, C rotation is too hard. If it, if that can get support for all grades in school, one day a week, once we go hybrid. I I think that's where, I think that's where we need to be. There is. I I'm not saying the six, nine idea came from a, you know, came from a bad place, but it's the. The community is not with that.
And maybe, I appreciate that, Andrew, and and I think that somehow what got lost in the shuffle the first time around, and I apologize. That that it wasn't clarified when we went through it, that first time we set the gating criteria. When when we brought the plan forward initially. There was a gate for grades three, K to five, and then there was a separate gate for grade six to twelve. And and at the building level. The advocacy was to bring the sixth and ninth graders in early. Not to delay the seventh, eighth, and tenth through twelfth graders. So the original plan that was developed had a separate gate for elementary and a second, separate gate for secondary. And after advocacy at the building level. The plan was was adjusted to create earlier entry for sixth grade and ninth grade. So I know much of the the earlier community discussion about this back in December. Was focused on a perception that we were delaying the return of the seventh through eighth and seventh, eighth, and tenth through twelfth graders. When in reality, the planning group had accelerated the entry of the sixth through ninth graders. And and I understand that got lost in the shuffle, but I I just want to make sure that that people understand that that was the. Intentionality of the planning group was not delaying the return of one group, but accelerating. The return of of individual grades.
Right, but the hundred, the hundred is just, you know, the hundred is. You know, we're not. I I want, I want both. I want. I want all, all staff to be safe, including. Situations where the staff person on paper looks. Like they're at low risk, but has other considerations. And I want our kids safe and I want people to have a shot at being, you know, being back in the schools and. You know, these, these. These numbers of, I'm just pulling up on it now, just double checking on the screen so I don't misquote. You know, saying. You know, so, you know. I mean, fifty, fifty is a. Sorry, sorry to burst anyone's bubble, but like fifty is a fantasy. May- maybe, maybe. Universal vaccine availability for everyone who wants it, maybe would get us to fifty in twenty twenty one. Maybe. So the the bottom line is, you know, people in the the community is looking at reality. And the reason that six, it's looked at as seven and eight. Whether you call it six and nine coming back early. Or other grades starting later, the the reality is, as it stands right now, they are so. We are so far away. From seven, eight, ten, eleven, twelve going back that we would never. It would take forever to get there. Here's the other, here's the other, another very key point here, lest anyone think that I am. Sacrificing safety to to do this, okay? If, if it's, if we've determined that there's safety advantages to having just six and just nine in the building. Then there's virtually no safety difference between. Having a third of the building in. At at different times. I understand there are some fringe of the, around the fringe of the argument, I suppose. Teachers would be encountering more kids, but I'm confident that we're doing a lot of stuff if if we're really. Being creative about people who need to work remote and extra adults covering classrooms. So kids are properly supervised and sometimes beaming in teachers. Then then we're gonna get there. So. Like, there's nothing. There's nothing special about the, to say that one, one age group should, should be there. So that's, that's what I would like to see. I I understand an A, B, C rotation is not quite gonna work. If that's the case, let's get the sixth graders in two times. And seventh in for a day and and eighth in for a day. I get that there's seven, eight splits. That we would have to figure out, but the. The the community is not okay with waiting so long for seven to twelve to have a chance. But I think they're willing to initially settle for a rotational model with blended. It's a sign, it's a sign that we're trying.
Steve, one of the things that I I've been thinking about. And we, you've said this before, that the intention between, you know. To bring back those grade levels is because of the transition, new schools, all of those things. And that the space between when sixth or ninth grade comes back and the rest of the grades isn't intended to be this long period of time. That that it might be a matter of weeks. And I wonder if. Rather than having a separate gating criteria for those other grade levels, if we do. Pick a period of time. So we say, okay, if two fifties are number for six to the ninth, then two weeks later. The other grade levels would come. I don't know if that complicates things, but it was just an idea that I had, rather than giving them their own special gate. Just saying, hey, we're gonna bring back these other grade levels. Two weeks, get them in the building, get them acclimated to a new school, and then two weeks later, the rest of the grades come in. So.
And just to be clear too, with the the rotational model, we were presuming a universal gate for grade six through twelve. So whatever gate number the board selected, we would apply that to all grade levels simultaneously. So. You know, Andrew, to your point, if if we went. Six, seven, Monday, Tuesday. Eight, six, Thursday, Friday, they would all come in at the same time. So whichever day or week that they started. All three grade levels start at the same time, same thing at the high school. If it's nine, ten, Monday, Tuesday, and eleven, twelve, Thursday, Friday, we'd apply that universal gate. And and whether that was a separate gate for middle and a separate gate for high school or one gate for the secondary. That that would be applied universally across all seven grade levels.
I guess, I guess for me, what I, what I intend to to put in a motion and and if if it's determined it's safe to go higher. Or more kids in buildings. Administratively within, within our definition of of blended. That's fine, but what what I plan to, what I think needs to be in writing. Is that every grade will be in school in the blended model, all six, twelve grades will be onsite at least. One day a week. And I don't, I don't think we need to get deeper into the weeds than that, but we have to get at least that deep into the weeds.
Go ahead, Rhonda.
Can you speak to why the gates wouldn't be the same for K through twelve? Steve?
I again, you know, we're looking at. The idea that the elementary students would return before the secondary students. And I, there's a. The science behind that, bringing the elementary students back earlier than, and we heard comments about that prior to this. And then also the the logistics of being able to walk through. That reentry process for students and staff with approximately half of our students first. And then bring back the other half, a period after that is Ericson.
Okay, do you believe that this gaining criterion that is in place right now? And the blended model that is there? Do you believe that this actually? Moves, moves the needle, moves us forward, takes care of some of the issues we've been hearing about. The, you know, the the abysmal grade situation. Do you believe that? What we are considering, what we're discussing, what we are contemplating, actually does anything to remedy? Families signing off on this computer tonight and locking out the door. And if you do, can you explain to us how you feel that actually does that?
So I I want to make sure I understand the question. So the question is, does the current gating criteria? Provide. Some sense of forward movement for families. Is that the first part of that question?
Yes.
Okay, so with the the current gating criteria. That was enacted by the board in December. Provides, I think, from a scientific standpoint, provides a rationale. For a return. A large scale return of students in an environment that is. Safe. I wouldn't say that it's a hundred percent, we're never gonna be able to guarantee that, but. We know that when we bring our pre K to five kids back into the buildings. And I shared this on multiple occasions because I wanted to make sure that people heard it. That when we bring our pre K five kids back, we are going to struggle with physical distancing. We're gonna struggle with that distancing in the classroom, in the hallways, in the cafeterias, other common spaces. And so we know that's gonna be a challenge. Obviously, the higher the burden rate is, the greater the likelihood. That students are exposed and potentially infected, while they may be asymptomatic. We know that. You know, recent research has shown that they are effective vectors at transporting virus home and into the community. So I think there's a balance between bringing our students back and and doing it in a way that gives us some level of reassurance that. While they may have some exposure, because the the burden rate won't be zero. That exposure is manageable. So I think that's where the two fifty number that we discussed in in December. For our our elementary students comes into play. At the secondary level, I, you know, talking about a rotational model here. Would be intent to get students in one day a week. I I think that. Setting a gate there, I am, and I guess I would defer to the board for further conversation about that. As we move through this next item, but. Setting a gate there that provides a direction that we're gonna bring kids in one day a week. I would provide that level of forward movement that you're talking about. Obviously, based on the feedback that we got from the building level administrators. There are several areas of significant concern that we need to address in the planning if we're gonna move forward with the rotational model.
Okay, so thank you, but with respect. Do you believe, I mean, I feel like you kind of just explained to me what we just talked about, but do you believe that what we've been discussing? Actually answers the call for families who need us to do something. Their their urgency is out there. For families. They've shared with us. We we have new families sharing with us all the time. Will we have done anything for them after this meeting today? I feel like it's deja vu, right? We need to find something we can offer them that's different, that's better. But answers their call, their their pleas frankly. For something that we can do to help them. Are we interested? And if we are, what are we going to do? Would we be interested in even picking a date rather than gating criteria? Could we do something like that? Like in a month, we have a date, we'll start getting kids back because. I am convinced that if we don't have urgency in our planning, in our decision making, we're losing more families. And we're also losing students. When I say that. Not losing them as if they're leaving the district physically, mentally, emotionally. We're losing them. We know this. So what can we do today? Not in another two weeks. To assure our community that we are hearing their their pleas. We are responding to the urgency, that we are interested in doing something that can actually be tangible. And can give some relief to them. I I just want us to think in that context. It doesn't sound like it at all.
Rhonda. Two things. One, I I mean, I think that's a question for the board, right? Not for Steve. I mean, we we have the ability to.
I think it's a question for everybody.
Yeah, I mean, but but Steve can't make a motion or can he vote on a motion? It's the seven of us who have the ability to do that. I I'll just address. You know, I don't know if this is answering your question, but one of the things that has been difficult and people. Have said that, you know, they they wanna know sort of what the challenges are and and why board members are are going the way that they're going. Or believing the way that they're believing. And I'll just use this as an opportunity. I I don't feel like I'm speaking just to you, Rhonda, but. One of the things that I'm concerned about is when it comes to the high burden rate in our community. Is the exposure of of staff to the virus. And regardless of of how concerned you are about the death rate, the death rate is really low, maybe that's not concerning to you. I won't, I won't argue that point. But the reality is, is that if somebody is simply exposed to the virus, they have to quarantine for, I think it's ten days now. If somebody gets the virus, they could be out for, you know, a minimum of ten days. It could be longer than that depending on on their symptoms. And when I think about the number of people that are required to operate our school district. Over four thousand employees. I'm concerned when the burden rate is high, that the likelihood of our staff being exposed is also very high. And when I talk about safety in our school district, I'm not necessarily referring to safety of of the death rate of the virus. I'm talking about the safety, the number of adults that it takes to to run a school district of twenty thousand. So. What I would envision happening in our district when the burden rate is high. And I I'm open to some discussion about what the appropriate number is. You know, but I I see as our our food service, how quickly our food service staff would fall apart. And not have people available. So I could imagine a scenario in a large district like ours. Where there's no one to to serve the school lunches. So what happens when the whole school shows up and there's no one there to prepare lunch? We don't have backup food service. We don't have backup bus drivers. So kids at a bus stop, bus driver's not coming. How do we handle that? Now it's an emergency in the winter. We've got kids who aren't gonna get picked up. And then the same thing with custodial. So those three groups, there aren't substitutes, there's not backups. Steve talked about how. We can, you know, work out the classroom situation. It's it's less about the teachers and how how flexible we can be there. But I'm concerned about those three groups and what that looks like from a safety perspective. I will address. One thing that we we've heard a lot about is that we're constantly talking about this gating criteria. We just talked about it last month. We're talking about it today. And. You know, this is an evolving situation. Every single day, we get new information. Somebody says, follow the science. I can find ten different scientific articles that say this, that, or the other thing from this country or another country. It's part of what makes this so difficult. So anybody who thinks that we can, you know, make a decision today. And just sit on it and wait. We've got new information with the vaccine. We've got new science and research that comes out, the numbers in our community. There's a lot to weigh and consider. So I guess what I would say is, what I decide personally to support tonight or to vote on. Might be different than what I support in two weeks or in a month, because we are constantly getting new information and. You know, I think our district is ready when it, when the board gives the directive to to open and function in in whatever model that might look like. Whatever model that might look like, um? Yeah, I'll just quickly touch while I'm I'm going here, um, the this hybrid model and Andrew, I I see what you're saying and I've heard the same thing. I just want to make sure that we point out that if if we went with, um, option A or option B? The the amount of time that that kids are getting in instruction? I I just I just struggle to see that as being an improvement, so if if we're talking about, oh, kids are failing, we need to get them back to school. Model A and B, I don't think is a wildly improvement if if we're concerned about grades, so? Um, those are just some of my thoughts, uh, that I wanted to get out, it's hard to communicate, uh, with people and to, um? You know, share where each of us are, I think that a- as a board, we're we're representative of the community, there's seven of us. We're, we all have different opinions, different thoughts, different comfort levels. And that's what makes this so complicated is is there's no cut and dry answer, I also don't think that there's a majority. Um, on on any? Different opinion, there there's lots of different places to be on that spectrum, so.
Rachel, though, don't you believe that smaller districts have smaller staff, they let, they have less buffer?
They they have less risk, they have less people that could be exposed. There there's less food service staff, so the less possibility that that somebody is is going to be exposed that way. So you you can take all the other districts around us, add them all up together and they they equal about our school district, maybe a little bit smaller depending on who you include.
So what, so you're saying that they don't have the same, they wouldn't have the same staffing problems that we would have?
Correct. And nor would they have the, nor would they have the same risk, the more people that you have, the more risk that that people are going to be exposed.
Okay, except, uh, but I do want to ask though? If you don't have? Well, I don't even know how many students we have right now, I'm just going to throw out a number, if we have? We had nineteen thousand one hundred and eighty-three people, um, in the survey, right? Um, that's what I thought the number was, if we have? Sixty percent of those students? In the buildings, don't we have less staff? And less people in the buildings, I mean, when we speak about the survey results, are? We're not speaking about everyone, we're speaking about the percentages of people that wanted to be back in the buildings, right?
Right, so so I, what I want is some time to to think about that, to think through it, and again, my opinion could change in two weeks. Right, but we we just got these survey results, staff are just putting all of this together. And again, if if we're interested in changing the gating criteria, then just take this survey and throw it out. Because the the there are some people who took the survey that said, yes, I'll participate in a hybrid and I don't care what the gate is. But there's other people who said, I feel comfortable participating because the gates two fifty. So that's totally irrelevant, that survey is irrelevant if we're going to propose changing the gating criteria.
Well, I discussed possibly a date rather than the gating criteria, what if we loo- looked at a month out? Instead of gating criteria.
But that's that's a possibility, we'll see.
There's a lot of districts that are doing that, right, and then they're just, they're basically, um? Bearing down and just making it work.
Are are they making it work, though?
They're going to try to make it work, they're, but they, their community that they're actually going to make a very? I guess intentional attempt to do it, I mean, they're they're not having all these meetings and then lobbying around something, they have committed to it.
So one of the things that I want to wait and see, and again, this speaks to an evolving situation, I'm not saying that I'm I'm stuck on a number and I'm going to live there? Until, you know, the end of time, um, but when we made the vote to start virtual? In August? It was my belief that the spread in a community wouldn't support schools opening up, and that was a bit of a risk and I didn't have any evidence, but that was my theory. And what I saw from? Most of the other districts in our community, uh, I I'd hesitate to say all, but, um, all of them shut down within three weeks. And and schools may not have been the driver, um, you know, there there wasn't, you know, terrible spread because of the schools, but they all closed down. And they they stay closed and the the community spread soared. And, uh, that was when we hit our highest number, now, um, schools are are attempting to go back. And as I sit here today, I'm willing to watch and wait and see what happens for a week or two. Are they able to be successful or in three weeks are they all going to shut down again? If they 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 function, then then I gladly follow and and maybe I'm three weeks later than than some of the other districts. But at least I know that, um, so just something that that I want to wait and see, um? You know, now the, all those school, all those schools were virtual and the numbers in our community went down again, now? They're all starting to go back and we'll wait and see what happens and I I'm not, uh? Um, married to any number or saying that I I'm I'm, um? You know, locked into my my thought process here, but I I also want to wait and see because? I don't have conclusive scientific evidence, I don't have, uh, a consensus around what the best practice is. And I do recognize that operating the Green Bay School District is significantly different than operating the West to Pure School District. And I'm not going to say, well, we'll do something at Preble and we'll do something at Southwest and and? Fort Howard and Nicolay, they're they're on their own and they, you know? I I I'm I'm going to look at it as from a district perspective because I believe that that's that's what's important.
I'm hearing you speak to more of a time period. Right, that would be the second time you've mentioned that, and so I just want to ask you about that. So you were talking about, maybe you would have, they would go back to school and you'd watch other districts, see how it works for them, right? And then maybe you said you would entertain, um? Moving forward, so maybe it is something we think about actually as a date versus criteria, maybe we actually look to our neighbors to see what they're doing. And we consider in a month that if, in fact, schools have been able to? Honor their families and pull it off and move forward? With all the things we have learned since September, maybe we actually could consider a date versus? Criteria and we could get kids back into buildings so desperately? That they need to be.
What what I can tell you, Rhonda, is, yeah, I mean, that 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 is a possibility for me personally, I can't support that here today? To just randomly pick a date on the calendar and say, this is the day we're going back, could I support that? I- in a couple of weeks with more information and more models and more results, it's possible, yeah.
Okay, so, but I think it would be interesting to hear others, other board members? Speak to that in itself. We know other schools are out there doing it, we know that they have committed to that, we've, we, this is not a secret. Uh, maybe it is something that we consider. We have to find something better for our families, I hope we can all agree on that, we have to do it. We don't have the luxury to wait? Much longer, we really don't.
Okay. Um, I saw Christina, then we'll go to Brenda.
I just think that it's very important that we center an understanding around what? Making it work means because we all use that, but I think it all means different things. We conceptualize what making it work is. Have other districts made it work, in some ways they have, but in other ways they they have not, right? Because there's been significant disruptions? Of quarantining classes, moving kids in and out, teachers, right? And so is one model better than the other, I mean, that's essentially what we're here to talk about and to Eric's point, and I'm? Appreciate you, Eric, sort of being so? Courageously open, I think, about? What's on the table, right, because I think that's a, that's not how we typically approach our school board leadership and our decision making in a district of our size around? You know, that we can't use the traditional decision making model here because things change so rapidly. And so I think regardless of how we move forward or the decisions that we made, concessions are going to have to be made by everyone. Everyone is not going to get what they want, people are going to have to be flexible and nimble, I heard nimble is the word of twenty twenty. Um, but those are, that's what we have to center, and so when we say making it work? There are concessions to making it work when you've, when you've picked a date, just that there are concessions about making it work? When you use gating criteria, so I just, I'd want to just want to make sure that we? We remember that, that there are different de- definitions there, um? There are no good choices here, it's a weighing of a cost benefit analysis and it's not always clear and that information changes rapidly.
Go ahead, Brenda, and then Laura.
Yeah, I guess I, my concern was setting a date versus raising the gating criteria and I'm like you, Eric, I'm I'm certainly willing to? Um, to consider that, my concern with setting a date is? The potential, you know? Uh, re-disruption or or disruption in families. I mean, we could set a date for a month from now and we could have a case burden of two thousand. In which case, you know, I mean, I'm not saying that'll happen, but anyway, I mean, we really don't know? With the pattern of this virus and, you know, we're, we we went down and now we're going back up again and and there's all sorts of variables? That we don't know what their impact is going to be moving forward. But if we set a date and the, you know, the gating criteria or the, um, case burden rate is? Very high, I mean, it's likely that our neighboring schools have shut down again. I think one of their challenges when the, just like you said, Eric, this is, has always been one of my concerns is that? The higher the case burden, the more likely we are to have not enough staff to staff our schools. And we've heard from other districts around our community that that's been their experience. And so, um? And so I I I have concern about that because? When you have that situation, you're calling class off, sometimes districts have done it the night before or the day before. Um, and I don't know that that we have? You know, some of our families are able to to flex with that, um, they have backup? Uh, childcare or they have a parent that can stay home or a parent that works at home, but there's a lot of families that? Don't have that flexibility and if we say we're going to open and they cancel their childcare? Um, s- spot and and all of a sudden we're we're closed again? You know, that, th- those, those are the kinds of disruptions to me that are? That are concerning and and I know that, like you said, uh, Christina, it's, you know, it's it's? They're making it work, yes, they have students in class, um, and there are certainly huge benefits to that. But then there's also, we hear from just, uh? You know, families and teachers in other districts that that they're not quite sure how the learning is going in their schools either? Because of the back and forth between virtual and and in person and things like that, so? Um, that's my hesitation to setting a a specific date. Um, like I said, I'd I'd rather look at at, um? You know, if we're looking to try to get kids back in school, I'd rather look at at raising, um, the gating criteria. I'd also like to make one other point, I, um? The American Academy of Pediatrics did put out a, a, um? Uh, a statement, um? And similar to, uh, I think, you know, Dr. Fauci's statement? They they all say, yes, you know, the aim should be to get students in person. Um, but in that statement, it says, this means working with public health officials to get community spread of the virus under control. And then when it is possible to reopen a school for in-person learning. So I think it's not? You know, they're not giving a blanket, the open schools regardless, um, y- you know, but they are saying that you should put? That the priority should be on trying to get get schools in place. Um, and, you know, that that gating criteria, that, um, community spread? Um, you know, that's where? There's not been guidance from public health, uh, um? Our our local public health and and Dane County, it sounds like, has has done something. Um, the CDC really hasn't given us guidance, they've told us if after two, up above two hundred is the highest risk. But they haven't said, but you can get back to school at five hundred or four hundred or or things like that, there's really not? Um, I mean, I think that's why it's been so incredibly difficult to figure out what our case burden should be. So anyway, those are, those are some of my thoughts.
Brenda, they actually did say five hundred, Dane County did.
Yeah, I know, that's what I said, I said, I, you know, I understand Dane County actually made? Made a statement today, which is what we've been missing all along, our state health department hasn't given us that, the CDC isn't giving us that, so it's? Um, um, so it's, I mean, it's, I'm glad to see the health department has has, uh? Um, put a, put a number out there.
Can I, can I go again, please?
Uh, I think Laura will hit her hand and then we'll go to Rhonda.
Okay, thank you.
Then Noah wants to get in there too.
So I just wanted, um, to say a word about, um, all the people that we've heard from. We've heard from a lot, a lot of people. But? I just want to remind everyone on the board here that? For all the people that we have heard from that want to get kids back into school like right now? We've heard at least as many? Emails and, um, from people and phone calls and that that? Are deeply concerned about changing this gating criteria and they want it to stay exactly the way it is or lower it? And we've been hearing from them too, and I just wanted to put a word in for those people, um? We're not talking much about them, but they're out there and they're they're deeply anxious about? Um, the thought of sending their children back to school, um? And really? U- until our community? Decides that their children's education is more important than their individual? Um, choices to basically go throughout our community unfettered by, you know, social distancing and masking? We're gonna, we're gonna continue to s- to struggle? With un- uncontrolled community spread, so, and we know that the numbers are going up. We, i- no one, no one on this board can say when that's where that's going to end. Um, there's a variant, we haven't talked about that yet, maybe multiple variants and there, um? At least one of them is considered much more contagious. Um, you know, the vaccine, people are getting vaccinated and that's extremely good news. But, um, you know, if I, if I, you know, could wave a magic wand, I would, you know, have our 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 teachers all show up tomorrow? And and get them vaccinated, but I can't do that, um, and no one knows exactly when that's going to happen. Um, so all of these things come together for me and make it really, really hard, um? To to just say, yeah, uh, choose a date, throw out the gating criteria? Um, and and just say we're s- we're going to open up schools, um? I I just, I just, I don't understand that kind of rationale, so that's where I am on that.
Um? Let's go, I, Noah, we haven't heard from Noah and he just had his hand raised, then I'll go to Rhonda and then to Christina. Go ahead, Noah.
Okay, thank you, Mr. President, I'm not going to filibuster, I promise, um? So? Just to kind of go back to the roots of this particular item, it is very, it's refreshing just to see a plan, if that kind of makes sense? And this is something a lot of students have asked me about, they're like? If they're not, if what's going to end up happening isn't going to be only sixth and ninth coming back with a specified date? Will there be something, and there is here, so? I would like to thank, um, the folks who helped put that together, it is important to see that. Um? In general, yeah, I think, I think the board should try to consider, and I get there's so many other factors, so I'm? Speaking fairly from the student perspective, not a holistic one, um? The board should really try to consider going with some sort of rotational model, that's been like, like, um? Mr. Becker said, the one thing I, that's been almost unanimous, uh? Throughout me talking with students, um? From middle and high school and everything else, it's like? That's the one thing that's been very rock solid, so I I do hope the board goes with with something like that. Um? I, there was briefly, I just wanted to kind of touch on that part about the amount of instructional time, um? Actually, never, you know what, I'm going to say, I'm going to say it later, I'm going to just leave it for now, uh, in general, I hope you guys go with? Some sort of rotational model, I think it's important to have so, our students back in schools at some point, even if that does mean doubling up on sixth grade? Because the days don't divide out in a schedule that's convenient for families, I get it. It's important from what I asked, because I I knew that that could happen with only three, um? Grades in four days, I said, you know, there, what? To seventh and eighth graders, would you be all right with? Sixth graders coming back twice and it's like, they just want to be back in the school, you know, the one day, that's important enough, so? I hope you guys consider that and, uh, how you proceed on this topic, thank you, Mr. President.
Uh, Rhonda and then Christina.
Um, so I want to ask Brenda, Brenda, you had made a mention? Couple minutes ago, you said you weren't comfortable with date setting, but you had? You said you, something about you may be more comfortable with raising gating criteria. What I really hope we can do tonight is we can? Take all of these emails, all of these phone calls, we probably had, um? The obvious data that we had to make adjustments for because it's not not pretty. All of the the facts, the things that we know, right, there are probabilities? There are probabilities and then there are certainties. And we have to think about the certainties and it is the charge of us as a school board to do something different. I believe that. To have another meeting where we basically don't come out of it with something to move the needle, I think will be a huge mistake for many reasons. I think there will be major risks because of that. I believe we will start to lose lives. Someone said in the community that kids just need to take a breath. They might be taking their last breath soon if we don't do something. So I'd like to see us actually use all of the information we have, use the data that we we know is out there and do something with it. Brenda made a comment and I want to ask you about, and I want to hear more about what you said about increasing gating criteria. Would you be comfortable doing that? And if you would be, what what are you thinking about? I heard you say you were, maybe I misheard that, but is that what I was?
I mean, I I I am concerned about the well-being of our students. I have been for a very long time. And trying to weigh that with what we've, what I've already talked about, what Eric talked about in terms of of safety and then just, you know, the navigate or the logistics of trying to staff classrooms when you have teachers out and and quarantine a lot when your gate, your case burden is high. You know, I proposed in August, setting a higher gating criteria or gating criteria for K through two, for four K through two. I mean, I think that 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 data has has been not only clear from what we're hearing from, you know, nationally, but I I think it's also what we're hearing from our local daycares that you know, they have been able to manage that. I think that the data shows that the older you get, the more you're likely to spread and more, the more likely you are to spread like you're an adult. So I I'm not sure about the 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 middle round in there. You know, like I said, it'd be, I'd be interested in in learning more about how Dane County came to their decision, what data they used, what you know, what what research studies they're using to make that determination. But but like I said, I've I've thought, I've mentioned this, I think, at least three different times and meetings that that we we should look at the, at our younger kids.
And I, and I'm really concerned about that as well. I'm concerned about all of our students who are struggling, all of our families that are struggling. I have faith that we can find something better very soon.
Rhonda, can I, can I ask you, what's your plan? Because you, I hear your alarming statements and I I don't disagree with you. I hear from those families. I'm concerned about that, too. But I hear you asking a lot of questions and what what would I mean, are you prepared to make a motion when we get to that point on on what your plan is to fix it?
So my alarming statements are basically just direct feedback from what I'm hearing from community members, right? So I'm here, I've been elected to bring that forward. I I'm not Rhonda Sidnikow sounding the alarm because of myself. I'm
I didn't say that. I said, I hear the same things and I have the same concerns. I I also, I I want to hear solutions or strategies. And I, that's what I'm not hearing. That's what I'm asking you.
Well, I would say that it's the job of the board to take our feedback that we're receiving and have the district operationalize the the groups that have actually been put together since summer, unless I'm wrong, that are in charge of actually taking and making this happen. And I believe we've got plans in place that we could utilize because there are people out there. From what I hear, there are shields, there are plastic shields being put into classrooms. There are, I mean, are there not, is there not something happening out there? Is there nothing going on? Is there no planning? I mean, if 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 I, as a board member, have to unilaterally create a plan myself, when I'm being told the district has been planning and the district has bought PPE and all of this equipment, I I guess I'm I'm misunderstanding what you're saying, but.
Okay. All right. Thanks. Christina, go ahead.
So Eric, what agenda item are we on?
That's a good question. We're sort of in between. I mean, we're supposed to be talking about the hybrid model. Maybe we've moved past that and have gone on to gating criteria. Again, they 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 do blur a little bit, so I get that.
I have a, I I have a couple, just curious things I'm curious about, and then I have a question for the board. So I, too, am curious about what opportunities exist, especially for our youngest learners, pre-K to first and second grade. So I, friend, I appreciate you bringing that up again. You've you've been a leader on that and thank you. I am curious to see, I think, every time I say I think we can do a better job, some people get salty about it because they take it personally. But I'm gonna say this because I think we always can do a better job. I think that there's some curiosity there about how we can work with our partners. I'm curious what they are thinking about pre-K first and second and about this conversation around increasing some and and shifting gating criteria a little bit for the different levels and the hybrid models that were put forward tonight. I want to learn more about that because I think I'd like to hear directly from them. And third, I'm curious about really if we can determine, and maybe this isn't for tonight, but what our primary driver would be for for moving more quickly into a blended model. And I ask this because that will help us to understand our decision-making. If we are, if the primary driver is academics, then we have to recognize that for many, for some, for a few, we don't know. This may not be the best move for folks. There may be less, less instructional time. There might be more chaos in classes and coursework and teacher disruption. I'm not saying that we can't navigate those things, but it's something that we have to work through. If the driver is well-being and mental health and social connectedness, then that's a different thing. And I think we could have different drivers, but there is going to be one primary driver here for the decisions that we make. And so, you know, and I, and I'm, I'm just, I think that's something I was just was kind of jotting down as we were talking. But I think where I come to at this point is the question for us, and we could sit here until three o'clock in the morning and talk in circles. But what I'm curious is, is is there political interest? And it is political interest because we're all here representing our constituents. That is the job. Is there interest right now in putting a different gating criteria on for action? Because if there is, we should be talking about that now. I think that's just my personal opinion. If there isn't, then what is the plan that we're going to do moving forward? But Eric, I'm just a little bit worried because I think this conversation is so important. But I just recognize that it's, you know, now hour three and we have another, another we have some other important agenda items on as well. So I don't want to cut the conversation short, but I just wanted to bring that up.
All right. Yeah, I appreciate that. I I think let let me just ask this. Does anybody have anything that they want to say? Again, we'll have the ability to make a motion in a minute. I think Andrew said that he has something. Does anybody have anything specifically around the six, 12 hybrid model specifically? Okay. There's nothing else there, then we're officially done with that agenda item. Now we'll, we'll go to gating criteria. I I think to Christina's point, you know, we've talked around it. If somebody has a suggestion or something that they're thinking, you know, you can speak to that point. Otherwise, if we're, we feel like we've, we've gotten to that and somebody's got a ready to start to make some motions, then we can go into action item and and anything that is there for the hybrid model and or the gating criteria. Let's go to Laura and then I'll go back to Christina.
So I would like to ask my fellow board members, do, are any of you concerned about the fact that the numbers are going up again? I mean, this, this to me is, you mean, we all watch those numbers anxiously, but they're going up. And, you know, it's, we've got what? You know, I'm sorry, but people are still dying in our state and in our area. And the whole reason why we're here talking about all this is because we're in the middle of a pandemic and this is a crisis. And while it seems some days like maybe it's not, it is. It's a crisis for our families. It's a crisis for everyone who works for our district. And it's a crisis for our community and it's being played out in many different arenas. And and they kind of all overlap. So I look at those numbers and I think, oh, here we go. They're going up again. It's post, it's post-holiday. And maybe it'll be a a brief kind of spike. But we, again, we don't know that. We, we can't possibly know that. And and every, you know, every indicator, all the warnings are that this is gonna be a horrible winter with dealing with this virus. And I don't know why Green Bay would be exempt from that. You know, if we're, we're not, we're not protected. So anyway, this is, these are the things that, you know, keep me up at night and some days buckle my knees.
Christina and then Brenda.
Thank you for that, Laura. I agree with you. I I think that's why I'm not in favor of picking a date. Because we've, you know, we pick a number, we we pick a gating, we pick that criteria and and then we 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 use science and and data and and research to tell us and sort of weigh those decisions. So I agree with you. That's why I don't think, for me, saying are an arbitrary date of January 15th, right? Because we don't know what the numbers are gonna look like then, right? And 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 so I agree with you. That's very concerning. To go back to a a motion tonight, Eric, where I stand right now is I'm a little leery of making a motion or voting on a motion. If somebody wanted to, obviously, we would vote on it. I I'm a little leery of that. Tonight, we have the survey results that just came forward. We just saw that. We were, we were presented with a wealth of information. I think there's some conversation that was shared here that shows what's, where some opportunity exists that we may want to explore a little bit more, that we may want to learn a little bit more. And I think that perhaps we, if if it seemed like, and I don't know how this would work logistically, right? We'd have to look at the schedule, but is there, is, do we schedule, if there is interest, do we schedule an emergency board meeting? Or is there something in two weeks? I don't know, but I think that would allow us to continue gathering information and then make action. Not at a later date. I don't want to seem like we're kicking it down the road, but if we did want to do that. So that's kind of where I am right now. Sorry if I rambled.
Thank you for that answer, Christina, to my question, but I would like to hear, I really, really like to hear the other board members' input about what they feel about these increasing numbers.
Let's, Brenda and then Andrew, and then I'm gonna speak after that.
Yeah, I mean, I I I agree with Christina. That's, that was what I said earlier, was that I'm not interested in picking a date. Because if we pick a date and these numbers that we're seeing go up, continue to go up, then we will be scrambling and trying to figure out what to do. So I'm much more comfortable looking at at the gating criteria so that our families have some predictability as to when, as to when we can actually go back and and do it in a way that that's practical and makes sense.
Go ahead, Andrew.
Yeah, so I I've also never said that I think we should pick a date regardless of numbers. And in fact, if you pick a date regardless of numbers, you're not even being honest because if the numbers spike up as high as they were several weeks ago, the numbers are gonna make your decision for you with the amount of, with the rampant amount of quarantine and illness disruption that will happen. You won't have, you wouldn't have people, you wouldn't have people anyways. What I think the the time is for right now tonight, I think we have, we've, we've had the thorough discussion and got the administrative report back about rotation of grade six, 12 and the hybrid model. We can take that step that I think the community is asking for almost unanimously to get all those grades included in that hybrid model. That's, that's an important step. If I understand correctly, the teachers' survey, which greatly impacts how we would be able to look at staffing and what building size would be like. Is that the 22nd that that's due back?
I I'm not exactly sure of the date right now. I'm looking at my calendar here. Terry, there's Terry.
The information was asked to be submitted for the eighth, but the doctor's documentation, the 22nd. So that's correct, Andrew.
Okay, so as as of that time, we'd have a better idea as to like how many are in a hard no medical category, how many people have different circumstances that we're trying to accommodate. That's important additional information we're gonna have, and I would support, I would support doing a motion tonight for rotation of grade six, 12 and the hybrid model, which I, which I plan to make. I think that's the one that we're ready for right now. And whether it's in, you know, I I don't think other discussions have to wait till the next full board meeting, but I think there's, I think there's some time, not a little bit of time for additional conversations to to happen. So that's what I would, I would support for tonight, doing what was and and also I think, I think it was widely expected by the public that the six, 12 decision would would happen tonight. I don't think the, I don't think the public was as prepared for something about the beginning criteria. I'd also like a little more time to read up on what, you know, how Dane County arrived at it and do some more, some more research on that. And I also think the ever, the ever-changing situation about the the vaccine, I mean, teachers are, teachers and school staff are in group, are in group one B. I know of a teacher, I don't, I don't think they're in, it may not be a Wisconsin teacher, but I know of a teacher who's gotten her first dose of dose number one of vaccine already. And I think it's, it's a lot easier to say, you know, it's, it's one thing to say we're gonna have adequate PPE when you come back. It's a, it's an even better step to say, and I I realize some may, some may make the decision of not, not taking the vaccine, but having that as a as an option is certainly a part of the solution. That being said, I think we're, I said, I think we're ready for a motion tonight on grade six, 12 is where I think we're at.
Andrew?
Yeah.
What do you think that does for our families in the next month, though?
Um, I think it provides what I'm, what I'm hearing from people is that, come on, there might be hope of some grades going back, but not all grades. And I think we're giving, I think we're giving all grades some hope of of being in a, being in a building this year, which is why this was my primary focus as far as tonight goes, is getting this, getting this six, 12 blended at 250 being something that all kids will be able to be in buildings.
I'm gonna ju, I'm gonna jump in here because I I wanted to speak after Andrew. If you have a question for him, you can go after, after me. So a couple of things, Andrew, I think you're right with regard to a motion there. You know, one of the things Christina brought it up about drivers and our decision-making. And I think, you know, the academics, obviously, from our administrative team and our staff is is always a a primary driver along with so many other things, and it should be as a board as well. I think this is a unique situation where, you know, a- again, I look at that hybrid model. I think from an academic standpoint, it's not gonna be as good. But I'm willing to concede on that in this unique circumstance, similar to to Andrew and what the, what the community has been saying. You know, the the other thing in terms of, you know, talking to our families and what they're hearing, what I want to get out, and maybe this is just me personally, but is, I I am not going to think statically about this situation. So maybe what gets approved here tonight is not, you know, I I, we're gonna talk about this continually, ongoing, and we're going to make adjustments based upon new information. Laura, you mentioned that, you know, we're, we're in a global pandemic and this is a crisis. And that's totally true. A subset within that crisis is schools being closed, and that's a crisis for a lot of people, too. And and obviously, A subset within that crisis is schools being closed, and that's a crisis for a lot of people too. And, and obviously one is a symptom of another, but um, we have to take all of that into consideration. Um, you know, and, and we talked about this last time, a- and I, I've reached out to a few people. I felt like after the last meeting when we moved the gating criteria from two hundred to two fifty, people who wanted us to open were upset that we didn't move it far enough. And there were, was also people who were upset that we, that we moved it too far. A- and we've got Laura and Rhonda who historically throughout this conversation have been in different spots, who both voted against the, the two fifty gating criteria for two different reasons. So we're in a situation where we're, we're, we're moving along. Some people don't think we're moving fast enough. Some people think we're moving too fast. And, and there's no right answer. Nobody's right. Everyone's on a different spot in the spectrum. Um, yeah, I, the, the Chicago Public Schools thing is interesting to me. You know, they picked a date. They're not open yet. Um, they, they picked February first for K eight, and they have no plan to bring back any high school students. So if, if we want to be like Chicago, we can throw out our, our whole plan, but that's not what we're talking about here today. Um, but if Chicago is able to bring back all of their K eight students, you know, I, I want to s- learn more about that. Uh, just like I want to learn more about what's happening in West Apier and Howard Swamaco and Pulaski. So, um, all that being said, that, that's my kind of final comments and we'll let other people wrap up. And if we want to move on to the action items, we can do that. Go ahead, Rhonda.
Thank you.
And we'll go to Dawn.
Um, Laura wanted to hear from board members about the crisis, right?
Um, no, what I want, what I asked was, um, how did my fellow board members feel about these increasing numbers?
Well, I, I want to remind you that there are other numbers that are increasing. Numbers of kids with depression, number, numbers of kids with anxiety, numbers of, numbers of kids with despair, numbers of kids with isolation, numbers of kids with, with really just no hope at all, right? And numbers of people leaving our district. Those numbers are also increasing. And those are things that I hope we continue to take seriously. Because it doesn't feel like we are at all. Um, the blended model that we, Andrew makes a motion, we vote on it, great. But it doesn't change anything for anyone in the next few weeks at all. And so the numbers that I just talked about that are increasing will can increase even more, okay? We can have probability, there are districts out there. I have teachers as clients. They've been in person the whole time. And they have been handling this. So if we aren't able to do something soon, the numbers that I have mentioned, the, the, the situations that are increasing, we know this. That, that matters as well. And so we need to also think of it. I believe we have two things happening at once. We have a crisis and a pandemic. We have a crisis, a mental health, social emotional crisis for students and their families. We know this. We need to talk more about that. We aren't doing anything about it. We're doing nothing about it. And it's exhausting for these families to have to sit here and watch us go through minutia when we don't talk about that. Families will have choices, right? They'll be able to choose virtual. Maybe they won't. I mean, I'm, I, I'm understanding that they will. So if they have anxiety, they can choose virtual. If they have health issues, they can choose virtual. We have families who have told us they have family members in their homes with health issues, and they still want to be in person because of the crisis that they're experiencing. So when are we going to answer that call? We're not doing it again. We're not doing it tonight. I would love to make a motion to raise the gating criteria to Dane County. I bet it doesn't pass. I'm pretty sure it wouldn't. But we're closer to answering that call. We have a real crisis out there as well as a pandemic. And other school districts have recognized that. That is why they want to move forward and do something. I would love for us accept the gating criteria that gets us closer to the blended model. Please, please, please.
Go ahead, Christina.
It, would you be willing to pass something, Rhonda, that isn't perfect for you, though? That's the question. Because, I, no, because tha- that's the question for me, right? That's the question for all of us. Because if we all have to concede to, to, to answer the call, which I actually think we are answering the call. I think we, we've been doing that. Um, has it been perfect? No. Are we answering the call? I mean, that's kind of a broad, I mean, there's many calls.
What call have we answered? Can you tell me what call we've answered?
Go ahead Christina.
So I think the question is, is if five hundred's not gonna pass, I'm just throwing ideas out here. So people on YouTube don't, we're just thinking intellectually here. If three hundred or three fifty would pass, would you be willing to come down and pass something that moves the needle in a way that maybe doesn't get to exactly where you want to be, but that actually moves us in, in a direction? I'm just getting, rather than staying where we are, where we split and we don't, we can't come to a consensus.
Um, so if, so you're saying would I approve of three fifty? If someone made a motion
add a number.
If somebody made a motion tonight for three fifty, and it, I know five hundred won't pass. I'm, I'm definitely very, I know that won't pass. I would absolutely approve of that.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Yeah? Because, because it's, it's, it gets us closer to answering the call for families who have been pleading with us. Yes.
Sorry, and, uh, Eric, one other thing. Would you be willing if board members here tonight said they would be interested in learning more about moving the criteria, but we wanted to gather more information and talk to community leaders and supporters? Would you be willing to pause that, knowing that that's a possible direction we're going? Because we were presented with a lot of information. I'm just asking that second part of it.
Did you, I'm sorry, did you ask me that?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, my
Sorry.
You know, I'm sorry. Can you repeat it? My computer was
It's okay. My second question was if people are not ready to, to get to three fifty, but they're looking to get, as I was talking about kind of doing more information and kind of getting feedback on the information that was presented. If, as a board, we s- committed and said, we want to gather more information. There seems like there's interest to move the needle on a few different things. We're gonna commit to X. Is that also, would that also fulfill your need? You know, our collective need to keep pushing forward?
I want to be able to to tell our families that have been struggling so much and who are really on the edge, that we actually did move something tonight. So if that means the only thing we can do and get past is three fifty, absolutely. Yep.
Uh, Dawn, you had, had your hand up first and then Andrew.
Yeah, Laura, I'm very concerned about the rising numbers too. Um, I, I mean, I've looked, I looked at, I, I watched Joseph Allen's PowerPoint presentation and I've read the updated Harvard um, healthy buildings study that they did. And even in that, and I, I've been watching um, what Joseph Allen has done since last June. Um, when they first published the original Harvard study, but they still talk about, um, and I'm, I'm quoting, "Everyone must be mindful that actions on evenings or weekends and on holidays can affect the school community." Um, Brenda talked about, um, you know, the pediatrics and they talk about community spread and how it can impact our schools. The CDC still, still says that community spread can impact our schools. I said from the beginning, I'm not a public health expert. I reached out to Brown County Health multiple times. We were told that we were going to be getting gating criteria from them. We delayed the vote on what our gating criteria was going to be because we were waiting for Brown County Health to provide us with that gating criteria, and they never gave us anything. We took what the CDC provided us. And that was that metric that had four little compartments, right? And anything over two hundred was the highest risk of transmission within our schools. And Eric, I do want to correct you because at our last meeting, we raised a gating criteria from one hundred, which put us in that medium, you know, to two hundred and fifty. So we didn't raise it fifty. We raised it a hundred and fifty. And we went into that highest spread in schools. Now, I, I honestly think, um, I'm curious to see what happens when President-elect Biden is in office because he's committed to having our children, all our schools open within the first hundred days of his presidency. And um, Dr. Allen did say he is expecting the new head of the CDC is going to provide guidance for schools day one. And um, I, I've said from the beginning, I'm looking at what the CDC provides us or Brown County Health provides us. I haven't seen, I read the document that Dane County Health put out on December fourteenth. I haven't, I didn't see a definitive five hundred number in there. Um, I would be curious to look at that because it, Dane County Health, right? It's a state of Wisconsin health department. I'd be interested to see that. I was looking and I, I couldn't find that, Rhonda. So if you have that information, I would be interested in seeing that. But I've been, from the beginning, I've said, I am depending on, on public health experts to tell us what is safe. And I, I would like to see what, I would like to see what Dane County, what Dane County Health said. I'd be curious to look into that and see what that is. And like I said, I wouldn't be surprised if um, when we have a new president and we have a new head of the CDC, that we will get different guidance. And that's guidance I'll get behind because they are the public health experts.
All right, uh, go ahead, Andrew.
Okay, I'm uh, I'm going to make a, a motion. Um, I move that the blended model uh, be updated to include a rotation of all grades from six to twelve being in person at least one day per week.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion on that?
And that, that would mean, that would mean that blended therefore would be at two fifty for all those grades because otherwise it wouldn't be, so that's, that's the intent of the the motion is that, so maybe I need to include that in the motion? Okay.
Beth, can we share your screen so that we can type the motion so that we have it exactly how the board would like it to read? Absolutely. Andrew, you want to include the burden rate of two hundred and fifty in your motion?
Um, sure, I'll, I'll look at it once I'm here. Um, okay, um, the blended model will be updated to include a motion, um, starting at uh, gating criteria of two, two fifty. Uh, two hundred and fifty cases per, um, hundred thousand over uh, for the last fourteen, over fourteen days. I don't know if I had to restate all those things, but that is the metric that we're using. So that's, that's my motion there.
Um, any, uh, we got a second? Is there any discussion there? I, I, I can't see everybody now, Laura. I saw your hand earlier.
So, Andrew, just to be clear, which model, which rotation model are you talking about?
So I, I decided, although I've been really burned on this before, I, I decided to not get that deep into the weeds with the motion, and it would only be saying that each grade has to be in school at least one day a week. I think that's clear enough without overspecifying. I mean, would I, would I like it if middle school was on an A, B, C rotation and we didn't make Wednesday anything special? I'd like it because it's more contact time, but I understand that might be too difficult to operationalize. Um, I should, I, you know, I think I have to add to the motion something, sorry, because there was because there was uh, something with two virtual learning days in it. Uh, I would like to see, and Eric, I think we just asked, it's been moved in second. We could ask unanimous consent for the change without having to do a formal amendment. Um, I would like to add to that comma without increasing the number of virtual only days. That would take, the one model that would be taken off the table was the one that had Wednesday and Friday off because that's not what people are asking us for. But whether it's six, six, seven, you know, six, six off, seven, eight, whether it's six, seven, eight, six, seven, eight, I just want every grade in school. And, and it's not, it's what I want. It's what I'm hearing across the board from everybody is give all the grades a chance. Even if it's once a week, give us a chance. And that, that's what this does, and that is a big move for, for families. That we are ready to do tonight.
Andrew, could I just ask if I can just clean this up a, a little bit? Because I just want to make sure that it's clear for what we're voting on. So could it read that the blended model be updated to include a rotation for grades six through twelve being in person? At least one day per week? Starting at a grading criteria, and then the rest of it. I, just to clean that up.
Um, well,
For grades, take out from Beth, six through twelve. I just want to ma- make sure we're including all the, it just read a little bit.
Okay. Um, so I can ta- I can take out from, from is redundant. We can, um, so it'd be probably a rotation with being grade six, twelve being in person at least one day per week?
For grade six through, Beth, take out from. Yep. For grade six through twelve being, I don't even think you need with. The blended model be updated to include a rotation for grade six through Beth. Can you, instead of the dash, put through? Nope, grades six through twelve. Thank you.
I don't get four instead of with.
Got it. Yeah, I see.
I think with, with grade six through twelve being in person at least one day per week.
Okay, now I, I think that reads more
Sure, yeah, uh, yep.
Does anybody have any issues with uh, the word smithing that just took place, seeing that we already had a motion?
I don't have any issues.
Okay.
Go ahead Brenda.
Okay, go ahead.
I don't know if you could see my hand there, but
Yeah, go ahead.
I, I'm fine with the word smithing. My only concern is that, because it's my, we're, when we talk about sixth grade being on site and seventh and eighth grade being offsite, seventh and eighth grade at that point is virtual. Is that correct?
I think he says virtual only days, so that, that's the, the days where every single grade level is
Right, except, you know, seventh is virtual only on, on, you know, whatever. Four, four days, three days a week. Seventh is virtual only.
Well, so that's a virtual only every day until we get to a, a hundred under the current model though, right?
Right, and I'm just saying, can we clarify that it's, that it's, it's that day when everybody's virtual as opposed to a virtual only day because of, because all the middle school and high schools classes will be virtual only when they're not in person.
Yeah, but this, this is talking about something that happens when we reach blended, which right now is defined it, which right now is defined at two fifty.
Right, let, let me just uh, clarify what Brenda's trying to say, Andrew, is um, i- what you're applying to when you say virtual only day is where everyone in the school is virtual only. Y- you only want one of those days. Brenda's referring to
Or zero. I don't, that's why I don't want to say one, because I think that could be zero if we're rotating. I get why it's not zero, right? Why it's originally wasn't zero, but I just want to make sure in writing that, uh, let's do six, seven and eight on three different days and, and add Friday as a virtual only day that was never in the plan. I just want to keep that one off the table by the motion and I think my motion does that.
We, I, I assume.
I'm concerned that someone will read that motion and say, oh, good, my kid's gonna be in school four days a week because we're only, because there's one virtual only day.
Um.
Because if seventh grade comes once a week for in person, they're virtual or virtual only, the whole class is all virtual on those other three days. So I'm just trying.
Correct, but right now they're virtual only all five days.
Correct, but I'm just saying that if somebody reads that, that, that motion and doesn't hear all of this discussion, they might think that we've now said we only want seventh graders to be home while virtual one day a week.
If there, I don't really get it, but if there's different wording that doesn't change the meaning, that says it better, I'm fine with it. I just want to get this, I just want to get this motion, uh, this motion done. So if there's a better wording that makes that clearer, then sure. I just don't know what it, I just don't even know what that is.
I mean, we could call it with only one virtual learning day, that's what it is in the model. Then it's consistent with the model.
Well, isn't that worse? Because then people are saying, oh, I'm, my kids only have one virtual learning day, they're gonna have, seventh graders are gonna have three or four. Right?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know. If, if nobody else cares about it, I'll drop it.
Go ahead, Laura.
Is anyone else concerned that we haven't, that we've just seen this, this plan in the last couple of days and, um, we haven't gotten any feedback from any um, parents or teachers or anything, um, as to whether or not this is workable?
We're putting it back to the administration to put the plan together. We're just putting the, the, the bones to it, which says we want every grade level to be in school at least once a week. We only want one day, you know, to be a virtual learning day. Um, and then it's, I mean, I think then that's, it's up to the administration to go out and get that feedback. That's how I see it.
Yeah, and Andrew was intentional about not making a plan that dictated what happens on Monday, what happens on Tuesday. The administration has put together two plans. Andrew put a motion together about what he likes and what he doesn't like about a plan and, and if the board approves it, the administration still has the ability to, to modify if needed um, within the guidelines that are in the motion. So, if there's no further dialogue on this, um, I think we can take a vote. Uh, Beth, if you want to pull that up?
Online voting's open. If there's computer issues, I can, you can always just let me know and I can take a, a verbal vote as well.
Yeah, if, if you're struggling with something, don't, don't battle too long, you can just tell Beth.
Beth, I'm, I'm sorry, I, I'm, I'm logged in, but I'm, it's not coming up, so, um, I'm a no.
Rhonda, it looks like I'm just waiting for you.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm a no, it just doesn't go far enough for me, sorry.
Okay, all votes have been entered and, um, the motion has carried. Results of the individual board members are as follows. Eric, yes. Dawn, yes. Andrew, yes. Brenda, yes. Christina, yes. Rhonda, no. Lauren, no.
Right, uh, hybrid model is past five to two. Um, so now we're to gating criteria and if there's any motions here, that's what this is for. We can have a discussion after a motion is made. Um, if there are no motions, we'll move on in the agenda.
Um, Eric?
Yep.
Can I make a motion?
Yeah.
Have to find it. Bear with me, though. Um, my motion is that K through two is in person when the gating criteria reaches three hundred and fifty cases per one hundred thousand over fourteen days. Second.
Any discussion?
Can, can you just repeat that again, Rhonda? I just want to make sure, can we pull it up on the screens for the public? Thanks, Beth. I see you're like, yes, I'm doing it.
That K through two is in person when gating criteria reaches three hundred and fifty cases per one hundred thousand over fourteen day period.
Rhonda, can I ask you a clarifying question? Is it just five K or four K? Because we have four K in the district. I just want to make sure that we're clear.
Thank you, four K.
Thank you.
Would that include, uh, Head Start or any younger kids than that?
Yes.
So three K?
Four K Head Start.
But not, but Head Start has three K, so I just want to make sure we're clear.
Oh, I forgot that it was labeled that, um. Yes.
This blended or is, would this then skip blended? Where blended is defined as four days a week right now anyways, would this skip blended and just have the blended category go away for three K through two? Or do you mean blended starts at three fifty? I'm just asking.
For, no, in person, five days.
Okay, so.
Full time.
So, so just to clarify, three K and four K are not in person five days a week, they're in person four days a week.
Well, I mean, like their full, their full schedule, basically. What they normally would go to school.
So if it said that grade three K through two are in person under a full schedule or in, in accordance with their full schedule? I know there's been a sec, I know there's been a second already, I'm sorry.
But my concern about this is there was, this is to not even have a transition is, is just very, is very strange procedurally and it doesn't, it doesn't match anything we've said before. It's not, it's, my issue isn't with the, my issue isn't with the three fifty, it's that we've consistently talked about transitioning transitioning through a, you know, right, that there would be a blended step before there'd be a fall, a full in-person step. This, this I think would be, uh, this would be an easier call to make if we, if we added it, if we added it as an action item for the twenty-fifth, then it would be today and I think it, I, I think we have a lot more we can hear and study Dane County more that we can't in the next five minutes that I think we could, I think we could get there, but this is, this is kind of throwing a wrench into it that we're now creating a thing that doesn't have a transitional step, it's just a switch to, a switch to fall. No one's expecting that.
I, I wouldn't.
But in two weeks, they would be expecting it. I mean, because now we've talked about, then it's, uh, more fair.
Yeah, I, I wouldn't support this now, uh, unless we were to put, uh, the blended model on it, um, temporarily, so.
And, can I ask, so you're saying it was supported if there was a, if it was in blended versus full schedule?
Think so, yeah. Go ahead, Brenda.
You do feel that way?
When you, when you say, when you say blended, as I recall, we were gonna bring our, at two fifty, we were gonna bring our elementary kids back Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, and not Wednesday. So is that the blended you're referring to? Is that Wednesday still off?
Me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, I just wanted to clarify what we meant when we talked about putting it back to blended. And, and my concern is that, again, I, I mean, I, I'd be very interested in, in learning more from Dane County. Um, if they in fact have set their number at five hundred, um, and there's good, you know, rationale behind that. Um, um, you know, I'd be, I'd be interested in entertaining that at, at least for these, this younger group. Um, and I'd also be willing to have, um, you know, not wait two weeks if, if, if that would help um, our families and just have a, another board meeting on, on Monday to, to get that information and talk about it again. Um, my concern is if, I mean, I, I have no idea, this is the first I've heard of Dane County's five hundred number. Um, uh, but my concern is that we said it, if, if this goes through, we set it at three fifty. You know, and then we find out that Dane County has good reason and, and the science is behind it, then we switch it again. Um, I, I'm, uh, a little bit concerned about that.
Go ahead, Christina.
Brenda, how do you feel about, so you're not hung up on this being full in-person, like a full schedule versus blended for you? It's just gathering more from Dane County at this point for you?
Yeah, I thi- I think so. Um, I may be interested in hearing from Steve if, if having that Wednesday off, um, is important. Um, I know that's been what we've done and it's given teachers a chance to do small group and, um, and things like that, but um, anyway, I'd be interested in hearing, um, from Steve on the question about the Wednesday.
Thank you. Um, just one other comment, Eric. Yeah, I, Rhonda, I appreciate you making this motion. Um, I could, I don't, I'm not ready to support full, full for this group. I would would likely support a blended model for three fifty, three K to Head Start and so forth to second. Um, so that's where I am right now.
I'm with Brenda. I would like to see the Dane County information. I've been, I've been digging. Like I said, I read the document from December fourteenth and I haven't seen anything where they gave a definitive five hundred in their gating criteria. I would like to see that, um, before I would, I would make a decision. I mean, based on what Dane County did, I could potentially support something higher than three fifty, but I need to see that, I would like to see that data that they had.
Yeah, and, um, you know, base, I mean, Dane County, or sorry, uh, Madison School District actually has, um, they're, they've decided to go virtual, um, for this whole third quarter. Um, so I, you know, that, that's why I'm, I'm, I'd be really interested to see what Dane County's, um, numbers are and then, you know, taking into account that, that even with those numbers, if that's what they are, you know, Madison has decided to stay virtual.
I also just want to point out that, uh, the survey that we gave, um, you know, obviously this only affects K two or, or three K through two, but the, the survey data is, we have to give everyone a chance to re-declare. Because there are, you know, some people who took that survey who said, I don't care what the gating criteria is, I'm in. They're gonna not change their answer, but there's gonna also be some people who say, I was comfortable at two, two fifty, I'm not comfortable at three fifty and they might change. So, you know, from, I, I think about all the work that our staff had to do to get people to answer that question. Now we have to go back and do that again and some families will fill it out quickly and some families won't change, but um, it does create a burden in, in the planning, um, for our staff. Not that, again, not that that's a barrier, but I just want to make sure that we're aware of that. Go ahead, Andrew.
I'm, I'm not so sure we need to completely resurvey again. I think we need to let people know as gating criteria change, they can, they can change their choice.
Sure.
I don't want to run out a new survey again, but yes, they do have to have the right to, to change their choice. I too couldn't find exactly anything about the, the Madison County, um, or the Dane County information. I found something that, um, so I think a little, I think a little more time will, will take care of this. Um, I also, again, I also think if, if we have, um, you know, if we have something different and clearer from, from Dane County that we study and, and applies, uh, and it's right for us here, I don't, you know, to do one intermediate step now and then do another inter, do another step in a, in a couple of weeks if appropriate, I would just as soon, um, I, I would just as soon wait, um, and do this on the, in, in two weeks or, or one week. I think two, two weeks gives people a little more time to digest it. Knowing that we're not, I wouldn't say two weeks if we were on the bubble of three fifty, but we're not close to it. And so, uh, is, is the motion made and seconded?
It, it has been, yeah, so we'll have to take a vote on it.
Uh, I'm gonna move to postpone the vote on this motion until, until January twenty-fifth. That's a motion.
We'll post it as a special board meeting.
I, I don't think it has to be posted as a special board meeting. I think that's a practice, but I think we can post an action item in a work session legally and I would prefer that.
Okay.
Wait, wait, we cannot.
Unless it's ill, why, why?
We cannot, the policy does not allow for action items in a work session.
Is it our own, it's our own policy, though?
Yes, it's our own policy. And you're not posted tonight to change your policy, so you can't change your policy tonight. So you're gonna have to post it as a special board meeting in two weeks to take action.
Okay, I, I would expect if the specific topic is, if the specific topic is return to school, we need to have the student reps at that. Is that gonna be a, a problem?
Well, the policy says, provide student reps are not at special board meetings.
No, it does not say that. It does not say that, Melissa, and you know it. It says which ones they will be at and it says they will not be at, the, they will not be at.
Please don't yell at Melissa.
Laura, I'm not talking to you.
Don't yell at me either.
You did it first.
Okay, guys, let's stop here, let's pause. Um, I think.
We have special meetings where the student rep has requested to go and we've done it. And it would got to be a huge problem last time when it was obviously something that had student interest.
Okay, we, we can, we can settle what's in our policy, uh, for that meeting at another time. We don't have to make that decision here today. Andrew, are you making a motion to postpone this vote until the twenty-fifth?
Yes, and in, in so doing, we might get more information that would cause us to amend or do something different or further on the twenty-fifth.
Okay.
Can I clarify something, though?
Oh, oh, yeah, hold on, I got, I got hands up all over the place. So let's go, Rhonda, if you do want to make a quick clarification, then I'm gonna go to Brenda, then I'm gonna go to Noah, and then I'm gonna see if there's a second to Andrew's postponement.
So, to be clear, then I will go with Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, Wednesday. So that, that is the motion.
I'm sorry, what, Monday? Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday with Wednesday, so it'd be blended.
Right.
You want your motion to read blended?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
But, so, we have, do we have two motions out here right now? Do we not?
Well.
This is a postponement motion on the original.
Yeah, so, so Rhonda's, Rhonda's motion was. Yeah, so, so Rhonda's, Rhonda's motion was on the table, and now Andrew's voting to postpone that vote.
That motion, got it. Okay, thanks.
Noah, are, are you gonna jump in and, go ahead? Yeah, Noah, go ahead.
Mister President. Um, thanks. So, um, because I, I don't know, we're kinda in some parliamentary shenanigans here, so I'm gonna speak kind of on the postponement as well. Um, I implore this board to not vote down progress over a Wednesday. And I hope that when that vote does come, whether this passes or fails, that you, if the compromise is gonna be a Wednesday, just make it. No matter if you, or if you're on the losing side, just make it. That's not, the, the idea is trying to move forward, and that's what I really appreciate here. And I don't think there's any reason to blow this whole thing up over a Wednesday. It's not worth it. We just need, I, I'm very happy to see that there's an attempt at progress being made. On the motion to postpone, um, yeah, I, I, there is precedent for students at special board meetings, and there's also been new precedent to not do that. Um, Mister President, I respect your judgment in that matter. I would prefer that when this does get posted, if the postponement passes, that students be there, because I do think it's vital to have student voice at whatever, whenever there is a vote on, on something to do with reopening and coronavirus. And I would hope you would look to, uh, previous president that has established board consensus to allow student reps to be there. Uh, thank you, Mister President. I will leave it at that.
All right, thanks, Noah. Um, all right, so Andrew has made a motion to postpone Rhonda's original motion. Is there a second on the postponement?
Second.
Okay. Beth, how are you doing with all of this?
I'm just gonna do a verbal vote for this one, if everyone's okay with it.
Okay, so we are voting to postpone, um, Christine, I'll go to you, uh, but just, everyone's clear, we're voting to postpone Rhonda's original motion of moving the gating criteria for pre-K through two to three fifty in a blended model. All right.
Okay, wait, I'm sorry, can I ask a question? So, the original motion that Rhonda made was full in person, now we're, we've shifted it to blended?
Yes, that she made that clarification.
Just wanted to make sure I heard that, okay, so.
Yeah, so it would be going to blended, but we're not deciding that right now. We're deciding to push that off. We've got a motion made by Andrew, second by Brenda. Beth, go ahead and take the vote.
Thank you.
Sorry, is that Warren?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Hi.
Beth?
Hi.
Brandon Hugel?
Hi.
Sit Nakal?
Hi.
Becker?
Hi.
McCoy?
Hi.
Sheldon?
Hi.
All right, pass seven zero, and, um, we'll consider that on the twenty fifth. All right, um, we've got a series of action items, um, for staff contracts. Somebody that's willing to make these motions as we go through them, um, Steve, did you have anything to add before we, nope, you're good?
No, ready to go.
Okay, uh, yes, Christina?
I was just gonna say I'm willing to make the motions if you would like me or if somebody else wants to do it.
If you're volunteering, that sounds great. And if we have somebody that's willing to second as we go through the process, that would be great.
Actually, just before you get going, just a quick note, I, as a, uh, uh, for the general public, uh, who may be following along with this, uh, just a point of clarification, I know people may look at this and, and ask why, uh, so many motions, uh, on the table. Uh, and, uh, I just want to note that, uh, uh, we have many different employee categories, uh, and, uh, just like everywhere I've ever worked in my career, we have board members who have, uh, family members, uh, who are employed by the district. Uh, by breaking these groups out, uh, into their, uh, respective, uh, categories, um, this allows board members to vote on them individually, um, and it also allows that opportunity for board members who have, uh, family members in those employment categories to abstain from those of, uh, uh, appropriate, uh, uh, votes as they come up.
We ready?
Yep, we're ready.
Okay, so I'm starting with eight C, correct, Eric?
Correct.
Okay, I move that the issue, is issuance of the contracts be outlined under Wisconsin State Section one eighteen point two four and one eighteen twenty-two for the twenty twenty-one, twenty-two school year as presented be approved.
I'll second.
I have, I have one question. So the rest of these are about the, the wage increase, which, which I get that. We, this motion for contracts is the renewal of teacher contact, contracts and the renewal of the district administrator? Is that correct? That's what I see in the, in the content, unless.
These, yes, these are the contract templates, either.
Okay, so when, when is the vote where we would typically approve the, is that next month that we would approve the contracts for, you know, we have a, oh, list of a hundred administrators that were approving the, the contract rule, did that happen already? Does that happen in a different month?
No, that's part of this vote. So it just is with the teachers, uh, there is a, a base contract, uh, that's used for all teachers. There's a base contract that's used for all administrators, uh, and then, uh, as with the teachers, that, uh, salary increase, uh, for the administrators, uh, is applied, uh, in a manner that's similar to, uh, that for the teachers.
Right, but, and I, I wasn't gonna make any changes or separate anyone out or anything like that, but we, we always had a motion where there was a, like, there was attachment of a list of all the administrators and we were approving their contract, their, their contract extension. Is that not happening anymore? Or did?
That, that is a part of this process. So just as, and I don't know, did you get in the past, did you get a list of all the teachers?
Not all the teachers, but the administrators we did, uh, forever, since I've been on the board. And there was a whole problem one year when I mistakenly tried to do some separate voting on, which was, that wasn't my intent. I was just wondering why we don't even have a list this year? If this is in fact the month in which we would do it.
This is the month in which you would do it, and, and I, uh, my goal in this process was to, uh, uh, to present to you, uh, that contract, uh, as it, uh, will be administered for the teachers, the contract as it will be administered for the, uh, administrative staff members, uh, and then the wage increases, uh, as applied across each of the groups, uh, uh, as approved by the board. So I did not delineate any individuals, whether they were, uh, teachers or monitors or administrators or any other category.
Um, so we're, we're ending the, the practice that we've had up until last year.
Well, I'm, I'm trying to present you a uniform process for, uh, approving, uh, all employees in the district. That was the intent here. If you'd like additional information on, on any individual categories, I can certainly provide that for you.
Okay, so I, the bigger point is, I think if we've been, I think there needs to be some, some notice or a little bit more discussion, because now for the, the first time ever, we're not really doing a vote to roll the administrative contracts forward. Um, we specifically said that we were gonna take that vote on extending the contract forward another year for the superintendent. Whether that was, whether I screwed up and did that verbally or I did it in writing, although I think I did it in, think I did it in writing, Brenda, or did we disagree verbally? Remember, we said we were gonna always, even though we didn't have to, and even though it automatically rolled over, that at least for the superintendent, we were gonna proactively do that vote.
Yeah, I mean, that's, but the superintendent's contract is on, on our list.
Is it, or it just, but it just lists the state statute? I guess that, okay, that's fair. I'll, my, yeah, my yes vote does not mean that I'm okay with the, the no notice change in of practice that goes back before me, but I wasn't gonna change any of the content anyways, so, yeah, okay, fine.
All right, um, Beth, I think we're ready to vote.
Online voting is open. Thank you. A vote has been entered and the motion has carried. Six board members have voted in favor. Uh, Mister Brandon Hugel has abstained.
As per transparency, I abstained from this vote because I have an employee, a, a family member in one of these employee groups.
All right, I'm moving on to D. Um, I move that one point eight one percent salary increase for educators retroactive back to July one, twenty twenty for those who were employed as of January twelfth, twenty twenty-one as presented be approved.
I second.
Any discussion?
Steve, can you just give some context as to why this is retroactive, if people are wondering?
I, so one of the things I think that's important to recognize is we're significantly off cycle right now. Uh, this work is usually done, I, I, and it's supposed to be in, in effect in July. Uh, it's usually, uh, done towards the end of the, uh, the last school year calendar, which is June or early in July because of the pandemic. Um, we are substantially behind schedule, I, and our negotiating groups were very gracious in, um, providing extra, uh, time for us to go through this process because of the pandemic. Uh, and so, uh, these contracts that, uh, are coming forward, um, for some of these employee groups are for the, uh, the current, uh, school year. And so we need to have that, uh, retroactive clause in there.
Thank you for that.
All right, Beth. Oh, sorry, go ahead, Rhonda.
Um, thank you. Um, this, this is really difficult for me to even speak to, but I, I'm just going to. I voted for every raise for teachers as, that's ever been put in front of me since being on this board. And as a matter of fact, I haven't voted for their insurance premiums to increase either. I was one of a few board members that did that, um, a couple of years ago, or that did not vote for that. Um, I really struggle with this. And the reason why I do is because we know we have families who have been furloughed. We have families who've lost businesses. We have families who've lost jobs. We have families who've had to reduce their hours because of the virtual format that we've put them into. We've had families who've had to pay hundreds of dollars to send their kids to daycares because they had to go to work. And we've had families who've had to make the incredible, the incredibly difficult decisions to leave their kids home by themselves because they had to go to work because of the decisions we've made. So I have a really hard time, um, that we're, we're rewarding ourselves, that we're not standing in solidarity with our, our families. And, and again, I've never not voted for a raise for teachers. This, this just seems like probably one of the worst times in history to do this. And it's really, really difficult and awkward and uncomfortable. Um, but it's like we're going around our families. We're giving, we're not giving them the product that they pay for, number one, and, and we're, we're, we're not recognizing what so many people are dealing with. And so that is why I, I don't believe I can vote for this, and I'm sorry.
Rhonda, can I just, I'm gonna just very, I get that you're struggling with this, and, and you've, you've been consistent about that. So my, my pushback on that would be that our educators in this district have basically had to relearn how to teach in a very short period of time, under huge duress, not only just in their classrooms, their virtual classrooms, but also in their personal lives as well. So I don't know if that helps you at all get to a yes, but, um, you know, I just, I just want to put that out there because that to me is a, is a extraordinarily, um, important thing to consider.
So it's not about whether or not I believe that they're doing good work, right? It's not about them personally. It's about reading the room, and the room is the community, the collective community. And the families that we've already raised taxes on, that are not in schools, that are struggling. A lot of these families can't work from home, they've lost their jobs. They're, they're having to leave their kids alone. Everything I just said, it's not, it's not personal about that. It's about standing in solidarity with our families. And that so many businesses and so many organizations and so many companies are having to make cuts. They're not giving raises, they're making cuts. So it's, it's not, but it obviously, I know this will, in, you know, T minus three hours, it'll be out there that, that I, I'm a monster about this. It's not about that. It's, it's about standing in solidarity with our community and that I do believe this is the worst time to, to give raises. We're, yes, we're in a pandemic and so many families are struggling. And they're not able to be in schools and, and, and it's just, it just doesn't make sense to me at all. It's about being in solidarity with our community. It's not personal.
Go ahead, Andrew.
What, what's the, what's the percentage raise on base here?
One eight one.
One point eight one? Yeah. So would this, would this do anything at all? Does a no vote do anything to change taxes?
No, it does not.
Okay, so I, I've voted for every teacher raise too. I, I could see some very bad situation in which we couldn't do even an inflationary adjustment of one, of one point eight percent. But this, to, to vote no here, um, it, it does not, it does not help families at all. It does absolutely nothing for them. So I'm a, I'm a solid no on, on, a solid yes on this and a solid no on canceling the raise. This is a, it's already been budgeted, no taxes are saved if it doesn't pass. It would just be more money in a, in a general fund. It's not like the, it's not like the federal government where you can just cut stimulus, which, um, we can't print money anyways. So, uh, yeah, I, I'm certainly gonna support the already bargained negotiated wages that are, um, as a modest one point eight percent that is, uh, then matched to other units.
Can I add something, Andrew, and to that point? It was already budgeted? Yeah, it was already budgeted and approved before we took a vote on raises. That's curious.
It, it included, it included a placeholder amount for, for an expected cost of living raise, which we can't go above, correct? So this is not, this isn't a surprise, this isn't new information to have a, a CPI-based modest one point eight percent raise. This isn't, this isn't news.
Okay, but when you say one point eight one percent raise, what you, what you don't relay is the actual amount of money spread out over all staff, right? It's, it's, it's a lot easier when you say it's one point eight one percent. When you have families who have lost their jobs, who have sacrificed and compromised their lives because of our decision, and that includes losing financial stability in their own homes.
And it saves them zero dollars and zero cents to vote no on this. It saves nothing.
It's, I think the optics are pretty, um, I think the optics are pretty sad, but go ahead.
All right, Beth, go ahead.
Voting has been open. All votes have been entered and the motion has carried. The results of the individual board member votes are as follows. Brandon Hubel abstained. Smith, yes. Becker, yes. Warren, yes. Shelton, yes. Sidney Cowan, no. McCoy, yes.
Passed 5 to 1.
We are on E, correct?
D, yes, E.
E, okay. Sorry. I move that the 1.81% wage increase for paraprofessionals retroactive back to July 1, 2020, for those who were employed as of January 12, 2021, as presented, be approved.
Second.
Beth?
Online voting has been open. All votes have been entered and the motion has carried. The results of the individual board member votes are as follows. Brandon Hubel, yes. Smith, yes. Becker, yes. Warren, yes. Shelton, yes. Sidney Cowan, no. McCoy, yes.
Pass 6 to 1.
I am on F. I move that the 1.81% wage increase for clerical, food service, maintenance, monitors, including elementary and secondary and trades, retroactive back to July 1, 2020, for those who are employed as of January 12, 2021, as presented, be approved.
Second.
Beth?
Online voting has been open.
You waiting for someone, Beth?
I am. I'm sorry. Rhonda, what's your vote?
Are you still?
Rhonda, was that a no? Okay.
I'm no. Thank you.
Thank you, Rhonda. All votes have been entered and the motion has carried. The results of the individual board member votes are as follows. Brandon Hubel abstained. Smith, yes. Becker, yes. Warren, yes. Shelton, yes. Sidney Cowan, no. McCoy, yes.
Passed 5 to 1. I also have a family member in that group, which is why I chose to abstain.
We are now on G. I move that the wage increase for support staff retroactive back to July 1, 2020, for those who are employed as of January 12, 2021, as listed, be approved.
Second.
Online voting has been open. All votes have been entered. The motion has carried. The results of the individual board member votes are as follows. Brandon Hubel, yes. Smith, yes. Becker, yes. Warren, yes. Shelton, yes. Sidney Cowan, no. McCoy, yes.
Passed 6 to 1. Right on to H.
Thank you. I move that the 1.81% salary increase for all steps for administrators retroactive back to July 1, 2020, for those who are employed as of January 12, 2021, as presented, be approved.
Second.
Online voting has been open. All votes have been entered. The motion has carried. The results of the individual board member votes are as follows. Brandon Hubel, yes. Smith, yes. Becker, yes. Warren, yes. Shelton, yes. Sidney Cowan, no. McCoy, yes.
Pass 6 to 1.
We are now on I. I move that the 1.81% salary increase for all steps for managers retroactive back to July 1, 2020, for those who are employed as of January 12, 2021, as presented, be approved.
Second.
Online voting has been open. All votes have been entered. The motion has carried. The results of the individual board member votes are as follows. Brandon Hubel, yes. Smith, yes. Becker, yes. Warren, yes. Shelton, yes. Sidney Cowan, no. McCoy, yes.
6 to 1.
We are now on J. I move that the 1.81% salary increase for all steps for technical and professional staff retroactive back to July 1, 2020, for those who are employed as of January 12, 2021, as presented, be approved.
Second.
Online voting has been open.
Beth, I didn't get that one.
I didn't get that one either.
There it is.
Have it now.
Yep.
All votes have been entered. The motion has carried. The results of the individual board member votes are as follows. Brandon Hubel, yes. Smith, yes. Becker, yes. Warren, yes. Shelton, yes. Sidney Cowan, no. McCoy, yes.
Pass 6 to 1.
Letter K. I move that the 1.81% wage increase for executive assistants retroactive back to July 1, 2020, for those who are employed as of January 12, 2021, as presented, be approved.
Second.
Online voting has been open. All votes have been entered. The motion has carried. The results of the individual board member votes are as follows. Brandon Hubel, yes. Smith, yes. Becker, yes. Warren, yes. Shelton, yes. Sidney Cowan, no. McCoy, yes.
Pass 6 to 1.
Letter L. I move that the hourly wage for support staff substitutes be set at $12 per hour for those who are employed as of January 12, 2021, as presented, be approved.
Second.
Online voting has been opened. All votes have been entered and the motion has carried with all board members voting in favor.
Eric, you ready?
Yep, sorry.
Making sure you're there. I can't see because I'm reading these off, so I'm just making sure. I move that the extension of and modifications to salary retirement contribution, moving expenses, sick leave, vacation time, and revision to liquidated damages as listed in the contract for the 2021-22 and 2022-23 school years for the superintendent of schools and learning, as presented, be approved.
Second.
Go ahead, Rhonda.
So, there's no attachment. Can we have some transparency around this vote for people? The changes?
The changes apply to it. I can share that with you. So, they're the 1.81 on the salary, the elimination of the clause for moving expenses, elimination, or the liquidated damages, change to lieu of retirement. We could certainly provide you an additional copy of that.
No, it's not really about me. It's people were asking about what the vote was, what it entailed, and there's nothing posted with it, so there's no attachment for things you mentioned. I mean, I was in the closed session, so it's just not out there for people to, there's no transparency around it, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Wasn't this always, although it was generally pretty routine, didn't we always have the superintendent's contract as an attachment?
I checked on that, Andrew, and I was told that wasn't the case.
Is that right, Brenda?
I can't remember. I can't remember.
I did go back and pull the last three in Agenda Manager, and they were not attached.
The last three years of January?
Correct. Yep, there was one last year, but prior to that.
And let me be more clear. What Steve just mentioned as far as changes, right? That's not listed here. So, all that's in the agenda is superintendent's contract. That's it. So, even what he just mentioned wasn't listed here for transparency, what was being changed or considered to be changed.
Again, as Beth said, we went back and pulled the prior to this. So, we went back four years, pulled the language from there, and pulled the practice from there. So, we were just following the past practice with this.
And I hear that, but that's why I was asking, so that I think it's better practice if it's more transparent, personally.
I definitely support that. I think moving forward, we can definitely include that as an attachment.
Just to be clear, the net impact is the removal of relocation expenses cancels out the future liquidated damages if you were to leave early. It exactly cancels that out and leaves the change as being the same 1.81% that all other employees are getting?
If the liquidated damages remains in there, it just has the clause in there that it's not imposed if there is a retirement as a result, or if it's as a result of retirement.
Okay.
But the raise is still there.
Yes, that 1.81 was applied as it was to all the other employee groups.
Right.
Was there a second? Yes, Dawn, you seconded it?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead, Beth.
Online voting has been open. All votes have been entered and the motion has carried. The results of the individual board member votes are as follows. Brandon Hubel, yes. Smith, yes. Becker, yes. Warren, yes. Shelton, yes. Sidney Cowan, no. McCoy, yes.
Pass 6 to 1. All right, that takes us to number 10, agenda setting, board meeting schedule. Drafts of the different agendas are in there. We've talked about things that obviously will continue to be priority for us. Did anybody have anything unique that we hadn't already discussed?
I'm curious about CARES funding with the new stimulus. I'm wondering if we will be getting additional CARES dollars?
I'm not aware of any, but let me work with Pete. And if there is additional information we can provide, we'll add that to the agenda and share it up there with you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, Andrew.
Do we have, we've been saying for a long time, and I think it needs an up or down vote, and if it's gonna lose, it's gonna lose. But I hope it passes. As far as taking an actual vote on a class size, on a real class size policy with actual limits, something like that the board would have to approve any courses over 30, you know, at the high school, 28 at the middle school, 26 at elementary. And I don't know where it is in the rotation, if at all, but I think it's relevant because staffing decisions are happening. And I guess I would like the chance to vote on changes to the class size policy in February because by the time we hit March, all those sections will have been created and it would be moot.
So, you'd like that on the work session as early as the 25th?
Well, I, yes, but I think, I mean, I don't think it requires a lot of work. You're gonna say you don't like it because it's putting additional restraints on you. And if I was the superintendent, I would say I don't like it. Okay, right?
And Andrew, I can share with you, we used aspirational class goals in Iowa, so we brought that forward. So, that's something I can live with.
Well, see, but here's the whole thing. It's like, we have the guideline already. This is a little different because the problem is under the guidelines, people get in classes of 31, and I think there needs to be a little more hands-on with it, which I think would be that the board has to vote. I don't think, you know, it's not, you know, if there's, you know, if there's 155 kids in ninth grade English in a school, that's 31 times five, yep. I think if you're gonna make that into five sections of 31, I think the board has to hear about it and vote. So, I don't think there's a lot to it, and I don't think more, I mean, I think people are just either going to say, yes, the board should fly down low enough to do that one, or no, the board shouldn't fly, but I think it needs to be decided.
Okay, so, understanding then that there's not a lot of prep work on our part, it's really discussion on the board part. I don't have a problem with bringing that forward in January.
With the intent of a February vote, because of the cycle, yeah.
Rhonda?
Yeah, I'd like to have some more transparency around the CARES Act money, what we have spent, what we have left, what our intention is with what is left. I would assume there has to be some sort of plan with that before we go and take more money. What have we actually, what do we have in stock? Like a line-by-line, if possible, budget, some ledger, something that actually spells it out a little bit more clear. I feel like everything we've had has been very broad. What do we have left? What do we have in stock? Just as clear as possible. I think it would be really great to have that.
Go ahead, Chrissy.
Sorry, I'll make this quick. I know other districts in Wisconsin, some school boards are writing some letters to the governor's office advocating that teachers be included in the next round of vaccinations just to sort of get out in front of the issue. So, we don't necessarily need to talk about it maybe at the next board meeting, but that might be something Eric and Steve that I'm bringing to you, and maybe as a board we can talk offline to determine if that's of interest, just that advocacy.
Interns on school staff?
Yes, we're actually, Andrew, just for clarity, we're advocating for all staff who work with students, including subcontractors, because we want to make sure that our transportation drivers are on that list.
All right, without seeing anything else, I'd look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
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 Proposed. Motion carries 7-0. That ends the board meeting. Thank you.
Thanks.
Bye.
You have been watching the Green Bay area public school districts' Board of Education meeting. Please visit the school district's website, www.gbaps.org, to view the program again. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling 920-448-2025 or by email at communications@gbaps.org. We will try to provide the We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and/or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.